Okay, I call to order this regularly scheduled meeting on the 34th Dearborn City Council for March 24th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. Everyone in attendance, can you please silence your phones just to not disturb the meeting? Mr. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Abraham.
Here.
Councilmember Hamud.
Here.
Councilmember Abraham.
Here.
Councilmember Paris.
Here.
Councilmember El Salafi.
Here.
Councilmember Herrick.
Councilmember Herrick.
Here.
Council President Serini.
Here.
We have a form.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. At this time, I would like to introduce Ms. Deb Crandall from Solid Rock Church of Dearborn, who's going to give our invocation tonight. And can everyone that can stand, please stand and remain standing for our Pledge of Allegiance.
If we could bow our heads. We thank you, Lord, for this day, the opportunity to be of service to our community, and all the blessings you've provided for us. We thank you for your love, grace, and mercy. We thank you for freedom to be able to meet as we are today. I ask you to bless the council meeting with unity and a purpose to serve this wonderful city and its citizens. I ask you, Lord, to protect each council member and their families, blessing them with wisdom to make decisions as they stand for the residents of Dearborn. Give them understanding and knowledge pertaining to each topic and proposal presented. Help them to have compassion where needed, courage in the face of criticism, and a determination to serve as they were called to do. Remind them of all they represent to Dearborn and how important their role is representing us calling on you for guidance and direction. I ask you, Lord, to bless our mayor, guiding him as he leads the city. I ask you to protect and give wisdom to our first responders, police, and fire department as they work to protect and serve our community. I ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Pastor, appreciate your comments. Thank you so much. Okay, at this time, we will begin with our council comment section. The council rules allows 30 minutes for public comment. If anybody would like to address the city council pertaining to city business, please fill out a comment card, which is located there. If you did not fill one out, you are more than freely to stand up and come to the podium. We ask you to address your, put your name and address, and kindly that you have a three-minute limitation. So I do have some speaker cards here. So the first one would be Dan Harvey. Yes. Yes, either one, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I'd like to discuss an issue pertaining to Oakwood.
Right, so sir, just procedural, your name, I know I said it, but your name and address for the record.
Dan Harvey, 1201 Linden.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. This is pertaining to Oakwood Hospital Neighborhood as well as the Snow Neighborhood Association. Anyhow, the property at 18,000 Oakwood, all right, currently, formerly, I should say, was a house school elementary. The school was torn down. That property, at this time, there's a zoning proposal out to change it from single-family residential to multi-family residential, community business district, vehicular parking. All right. But anyhow, there's been numerous issues pertaining to this. The one is that, you know, flooding, which comes up constantly in Dearborn. This particular neighborhood has had a history of flooding for, you know, for the last 50 years. You know, basements are always flooding when you get a heavy rain. Southfield Freeway floods and it's shut down. It's horrendous. But anyhow, so clearly, there's a huge problem with flooding. You put more concrete, high traffic usage in that area, it's going to be a bigger flooding problem. Of course, the other issue is traffic, all right. Ford Motor Company isn't even back in the office with a lot of their remote workers. That's going to create a horrendous problem when they're back. It's always been a problem. When the property was even sold from being a school, Glenn Mayeko made the comment that even because of the traffic, it wasn't even good for a school. All right. And then, of course, back in the 1970s, just for the record, a student from Stout Junior High was crossing Oakwood and actually got killed right on Oakwood. All right. Oakwood Hospital has employees that work across the street, so they have to cross from the parking lot to the hospital throughout the day. That's a mess already. And then, of course, you have ambulances, you know, coming up and down the Oakwood. You never know when they're coming. And then, you compare that with the traffic you get from like the hill, it's just so nasty. Like I said, even under the mildest of conditions, it's not good. It's not like Telegraph, it's not like Michigan Avenue, it's Oakwood Boulevard, it's a smaller road, you know, it's not suitable for this high-density development. But anyhow, there's been talk of a lot of green space parks for the city of Dearborn as far as funding. I think this is a great opportunity. This would be a great place to have a park. If the developer can't live with the single-family residential, well, then a green space park would be certainly an excellent alternative.
You have 15 seconds.
The other thing, of course, let's see if there's anything else I could throw in there. Oh, they have water retention ponds over on Rotunda. Ford put these massive above-ground water retention ponds in. That property would be good to put great big water retention ponds in. More green space, more water retention, not in your sewer, not in your basement.
Thank you very much, Mr. Harvey, for your comments. We appreciate that. We're going to take the comments that are similarly situated together, just to group them for sake of ease for the council to understand. The other one also has to do with the same area, and the name is Pam Moore.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Pam Moore. I live at 1840 Houston Street in Dearborn, right in the Snowwoods area. I'm pretty much going to echo what Dan said. His concerns are my concerns. He mentioned about turning that pro, that single-family zone, the property zoned single-family into a green space. And perhaps they could add a pond in that green space to take care of some of the overflow, the runoff, just like they had to do at the Behavioral Health Building at Southfield and Rotunda, just like Ford Motor Company is doing near Carroll Shelby Drive between the Oakwood and Rotunda area. Plus, this development is just crazy. There's so much vacant property that's already zoned commercial in Dearborn, such as Village Plaza on the northwest corner of Michigan in Otter Drive, which has been vacant for years, is, and is a total eyesore. And what about the Jacobson property on Michigan Avenue? Or what about the southeast corner of, like Michigan and Telegraph? That property has also been vacant for years. Has anybody tried to attract developers to those properties? Now, the house school, house school property, the development was started, the plans were started two years ago. I only found out about this on February 8th. I went to a Snowwoods Association meeting. Many of us never heard about this before. It was kind of a hush-hush, under-the-table kind of development. And we learned that this development had been planned for a couple of years, and that they only had to notify residents about 300 feet within the property. Pretty, I don't know, doesn't, doesn't make sense to me.
That's, ma'am, just, I didn't want to interrupt you, but, Mr. Romer, the zoning requirement for notification is statutory with state law, is that correct?
Yeah, and they would have, the surrounding homeowners would have received notice before it went to the planning commission pursuant to law.
Okay, so that, I just want to clarify that for you.
Yeah.
The state law requires the notice, and it's not done by us, it's, the state requires it. So it was fulfilled, it wasn't done improper. Just wanted to make sure you knew that.
Yeah. That just doesn't make sense because it affects, it's going to affect so many residents in this area.
Fair.
And our concerns about Oakwood, as Dan just mentioned, so much traffic on Oakwood. You've got the hospital, you've got the medical center across the street, which is, that parking lot, there's not enough spaces for the cars that go there now.
You have 15 seconds.
And Stout, Stout School, kids got to cross that area too. This, this property, just, we just cannot withstand any more development in this area. Too many flooded basements, too many closed calls on Oakwood. We've had enough. We want our demands to be heard. We want studies being done about traffic flow. We want studies being done about flooding and sewage in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and next is James Schmidt.
My name is James Schmidt. I reside at 1266 Linden Street, Dearborn. I also have a property at 1118 Linden on the same street about 10 houses down. My backyard butts up to the house school property. I've been born and raised in Dearborn, and Dearborn has always been a city of communities and neighborhoods. It's been the envy of all the cities around us. I mean, Ford Field, the, all the, all the other amenities, Camp Dearborn, the police service, the fire service, everything. We need neighborhoods, we need people, we don't need quick profits, we need long-term established homes. We need people that are going to have their families there, raise their families, people that go to school there, people that live there, live their lives there. We need, and if we're, if, I understand it's a private individual that purchased this property, and he needs to make a profit, but I believe he should be held accountable to the zoning regulations as they were when he bought it, and he should not be, we should not rezone it just to help him make an extra buck. That's about all I got to say. Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you, appreciate you coming in. Okay, and next we have Harold Blake.
Been a Dearborn resident all my life. Been in my current home for 37 years. We bought there, it was a nice, quiet, single-home zoning, and developer kind of rolled the dice and bought the thing as single-home zoning, and now wants to change it to put in a part, a big part of it is multiple-floor, he said, low-income, multiple-family housing, which is definitely going to inject a lot of crime. I don't think we need to have an education from Harvard or Yale to figure that one out. That is the biggest thing the neighborhood's worried about. There was some talk one time about putting a senior care center. That's not real dangerous. Haven't heard anything about that. There's also, I couldn't hear from the back of the room if they were talking about the, is anybody going to do anything with redeveloping the Fairlane Town Center? That's a pretty big facility that a lot of creative ideas and business things could happen. Things that have changed since we moved in, the church went away, the QMP Ford building got tore down, house school went, and there's a playground and a green area behind there. And I realize that we need to generate some revenue too, that a green area doesn't do that for the city, but if some of that area could be retained with that concept in mind, they've had the medical, health psych center there. Neighbors are, we've observed that, we don't know exactly what's going on with that, or how safer. Dangerous that could be. Appreciate you giving me a few minutes to speak and share some thoughts and ideas for the city.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, and next we have Ronald.
Monty Murray.
Monty Murray, yes. Thank you, sir.
Monty Murray, 1647 Linden Street.
Yes, sir.
Dearborn. I'm in the Snowwoods area, and I'm about two blocks south of that, of Oakwood Boulevard. And I'm, I support everything that Daniel Harvey was saying about all the issues with the flooding and the traffic, and all the, what other people have spoke to, I support. So I'm opposed to making that a commercial zoning, and I wanted to keep that a residential.
Thank you very much for your comments, sir. We do appreciate it. Okay, next we have Jonathan, or Jonah? I can't, it's hard to read that, maybe a less, Jonah?
Seidel, Johanna.
Johanna, sorry. Couldn't read it. I followed. You looked at the last name, good. We appreciate that. Okay, we're almost done.
My scroll. So, hello, I'm Johanna Seidel, 21701 Morley Avenue. I'm here to talk about April Arts Month in Dearborn, which is a product, project of the Dearborn Recreation Commission, Cultural Arts Committee, and the Dearborn Community Fund. Highlighting the Dearborn art community, we have 21 events and places to visit to see local art all month long through April. All events are free of charge, and every event throughout the month is listed on this brochure, which will be a tri-fold card when they come in. And there's a scan card, or a scan code on the back, that you, you can scan it, and it will plot you a course to see all the public art in Dearborn, all the street art in Dearborn. So also, look for the banners highlighting April Arts Month that are located along Michigan Avenue, heading east from the Southfield Expressway exit to Greenfield. There are two dates I want to highlight. Sunday, April 23rd, it will be the art stop at the center, one day only, from noon till 5:00, in the Ford Community Performing Arts Center, featuring visual and performing arts in the lobby, a community mural, the Pjeski Gallery exhibit, A Picture Is Worth $1,000, and a visual installation called Wild Aesthetic by Sean Hagee that will fill a large part of the ballroom, floor to ceiling. It will be total immersive art, you can walk through, touch, and even sit in. The next date to remember is Tuesday, April 25th, at 7:00 PM in Studio A for the Mayor's Art Awards. Finally, we would like to thank our sponsors, the East and West DDDAs, Jim Thorpe from Ameriprise, Dearborn Federal Savings, Malik Al Khabab, and Quay House in the city of Dearborn as our partner. So I invite you to take a brochure there along the back wall there, and do join us for our events this April. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for the update. Appreciate that. Okay, and next speaker we have is Mr. Cullum.
Council, good evening. Eric Cullum, President of Police and Fire Retirees Association. I'm here basically to ask you for some assistance with a FOIA request I've made. This was the request. The questions were this. Excuse me.
Okay.
Records of who chose PNA Group to provide healthcare deductible benefits, records of the amount paid and when to PNA Group, records of who chose health advocate concierge services, and records of the amount paid and when to health advocate concierge services. On January 18th of 2023, I sent those questions to Amanda McClanahan, and I never received a response. On January 24th, I spoke to Amanda here at a council meeting, and she said she did receive this email and was working on it. On February 7th, 2023, I mailed the request to the proper, to the legal department at City Hall. On February 13th, I phoned the legal department and asked if they received the FOIA. They said they did. On February 22nd, excuse me, 27th, I emailed the legal department asking them for the results of the FOIA. On February 28th, I had a response that they were in the process of gathering the information. On March 2nd of 2023, I was sent some results. They were not complete. The results basically were several pages of invoices and receipts from the healthcare advocate services, which appears that the city's paying approximately $3,000 a month, and that started in November of 2022. I sent them back that same day on March 2nd, saying that the request wasn't complete. On March 3rd, I received an email from the city saying they would look into it, me asking about the incomplete results. On March 7th of 2023, I received some additional documents, basically a repeat of the documents for the healthcare advocate services. I also did receive one other document, which was concerning the PNA Group. As you all know, maybe Mr. Enos doesn't, Councilman Enos, that's the group that was dealing with the deductible cards that you've had many questions, comments, and complaints about. The only thing I've got concerning them was dated February 2023, where they paid a monthly administration fee of $3,741.50. On March 14th, I received more additional documents for the HCA, but no other additional documents for PNA Group. So I'm kind of looking at council to see if there's a way.
You have 15 seconds.
If there's a way to assist me with the rest of the FOIA request. And I spoke to Mr. Romer, and I don't know if that's where we go again next. I guess, to say to me that there are no documents, I find that hard to believe, especially about the PNA Group, which is the group that provides the benefits cards.
So you received the response that there was no documents?
No, I received that one document about.
So you did not receive, okay, because you said that, so there, you never received a denial?
A denial? No, sir.
Okay, so you received what they had, there's a specific FOIA process?
Yes.
The council has, is not privy to that, and the recourse for what you receive from the FOIA is the circuit court, just so you know. You can appeal to us if they denied you, but they, there wasn't a denial, so I guess you would have to go make sure that you handled the right process. In the beginning, obviously, you sent it to the wrong place, then you sent it to the right place, but at this point, yeah, you're not supposed to send it to this, the chief operating officer. It's supposed to go through the police and legal department.
No, no, sir. No, I spoke to her about it because I was starting the process.
Oh, I thought you said you sent it to her.
I sent the email request.
And then you said that she did receive it, and you said you talked to her about it.
Yes, I sent the.
So you did send it to her.
The request, not the FOIA request. I just asked Amanda about these questions, I never received a response, I asked with her.
Fair enough.
Now, my understanding of the procedure, if I have it right, maybe I'm wrong, is that after this, after I questioned the FOIA request, then I would make basically a council appeal for the FOIA request. Now, I don't know if that needs to be on paper form or what I've just done.
No, what you just done doesn't fall, I mean, Mr. Romer, do you want to speak on it?
Well, just a couple of clarification here. So I think what council president is indicating, this FOIA was not denied, it was approved. And I think what you're indicating, at least from my reading, because I pulled it up while you were sitting in the audience, indicating as to who, paperwork as to who made the choice, there is no paperwork as to who made the choice. So when you're saying it's non-responsive, I think what you really need to do is get in touch with my FOIA coordinator, indicating what you believe to be non-responsive, so that he can review to make sure there's nothing outstanding that wasn't provided. But he approved it, and what was, what we have was provided. So I don't know what you're appealing.
Well, the fact that there was, again, that I find it very hard to believe that there are no.
You might find it hard to believe, but sometimes there are no documentation related to the decision. The decision is done in a meeting, and there's no documentation, and the FOIA law does not require us to make documentations to suffice your FOIA request.
But the PNA Group would be a budgeted item that the council either must have talked about or was passed somehow.
Yeah, Mr. Cullum, this is not the forum for you to have a back and forth with them. You're a police officer, you sat on the committee, which you're talking about, is that correct? So the residents know.
Yes.
You were chosen to sit on this committee that you're talking about.
Right.
So if you feel that you're not getting the documents, the city attorney instructed you on the proper manner, I know you believe in procedure, this is not the proper forum for this. If you were not denied anything, you felt it wasn't what you wanted, he gave you an opportunity to speak with a coordinator to further your discussion on it, but it's not for tonight, it's not for council.
Okay, can I ask who the coordinator is?
Yeah, Mr., you can ask after the record, I just want my Councilman Abraham to add something, and we will get you that information. Councilman Abraham.
Just in general, I don't want to speak to the details of this, but just so people understand, and Corporation Council already hit on that point, so I'll just want to reiterate, FOIA requests are very specific, and I think everybody should know, it doesn't obligate the city to produce or prepare extra documents. The FOIA request is designed primarily to copy what's already on file and provide it to the petitioner, if it exists. So I think, I heard what you said, I heard what you read, I think sometimes the specific words are very important. So my advice is go back to the coordinator and maybe revise your request. If you want all the supplier invoices for each of those vendors, I think you should word it just like that. If you want proof of payment, I think we pay mostly by check, you could probably get an ACH receipt or a canceled check as part of your FOIA request. But I think you need to be very specific on the documents that you are requesting and not just proof or, or how the, you know, there is no document of how the decision was made and who made it. That, that's not a document that, as Corporation Council said, we can fabricate. If there's something specific, like in that case, I would ask for the written agreement between the vendor and the city, then you'll have a document. But I would be choosing your words on documents that you think might be on file.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cullum, appreciate it. Thank you, Councilman Abraham. Next we have Ms. Lee.
Thank you for hearing me tonight, 1737 Hollywood, Laura Lee. So I'm with all these gentlemen and ladies in the back that talked about how property, so I'm not going to repeat everything they said because you've already got it down. My concern is this, and I don't know how you guys process back and forth because you said we're not supposed to do that. Okay, but what I, my concern is, what do you consider low-income? That really is bothering me, a low-income, high-rise. I want to know what that is. To me, it's scary because I don't look at Dearborn, where I live, as low-income. Okay, there's all kinds of places to put stuff like that. Okay, there's a lot. I'm a good person, I care about people, but low-income, and then I understand also there was supposed to be a pharmacy put underneath. I, am I correct or incorrect, or supposed to be a bunch of stores and a pharmacy?
The, ma'am, just to answer that part, the council has not, it has not completed through to the council yet, so we have.
Okay, okay.
We don't know, we look at strictly zoning, we don't pick what the person who bought the property puts in there, it's not the government.
Okay, well, that's what I, that was what I understood, and this has been going on for two years. I was one of the people that marched through the neighborhood with a ton of flyers for the last time we did this, and it was only going to be a video, and it was three hours before the video was supposed to be presented, which shouldn't give anybody any time for anything, and when these people got papers in their hand, they were angry. I probably handed out to about 100 homes because that's all I could handle as far as walking. So, the thing of the high-rise, the income, the low-income, again, it's whatever, it's for the zoning, but my concern is, a big concern, because I have talked to several, several, several neighbors on my block, two, three blocks, they're afraid of low-income, they're afraid of the pharmacy, and they're afraid of drugs. They're afraid of having drugs filtered in through low-income through a pharmacy, and it's only across the street from the hospital. Okay, I understand all the stuff about the traffic and the flooding, and I've been here 33 years, I'm a Guido person, that's my family. Okay, been here a long time, I don't like what I see happening to my city. I'm 68 years old, I was born here, that's my family, and I really, really. And I really, really am nervous about that high-rise, low income, and drugs. Because honestly, people, ladies and gentlemen, I see it coming. And I don't think I'm wrong. Thank you for letting me say that.
Thank you, ma'am, we appreciate it. Just for one clarification for you, just to understand, just to give you some insight. Income verific, income status is set by the federal guidelines in the Housing Administration. Is that correct, Mr. Romer?
Yeah, there are guidelines for our housing requirements, our buildings.
Right, so if you wanted to get that information, it is available for you to let you know what, what does it mean. But usually, they have medium income, it's called. So a medium income is different here than it is in a different city, and it's different here than it is in a other city. So just, I want you to understand, it's, it might not be what you're thinking. You could look into it more, it gives you some more surety, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we have two more speakers, and we will be closing our public comment section. Again, there is another public comment section at the end of the meeting. And of course, comments on specific items are always welcome at the time the item is called. Mr. Blaine Coleman.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Serini. You know, it gives me such a nice feeling to see the council members communicating with the speakers. We've talked about this resolution that we are against military aid to Israel, and we've talked about it in the Ann Arbor City Council many times for many years. And really, it's like talking to a stone wall.
Sure. I'm sorry, Mr. Coleman, we had advised you the council rules do not allow you to bring any placards or information like this.
Not even this size?
No.
Okay, all right.
The size is immaterial because it's, it's, no placards are to be used.
Okay, anyway, I mean, and you know, there's some feedback right there. In Ann Arbor City Council, you get nothing. It's like a stone wall. And so I appreciate that you're communicating with people, and it gives you a feeling of community. It gives you a feeling of some human contact. In Hamtramck, I have to tell you, it felt like a family. We went in there total strangers, total strangers. And the Hamtramck City Council just opened their hearts and said, yeah, we'll approve a resolution for Palestinian rights, a resolution against occupation, a resolution against military aid to repressive governments. Not exactly the phrasing we asked for, but they really, really went way out on a limb for two total strangers. You know, it felt like family. By the way, nothing bad happened to them, and I'm sure that their community appreciated it a lot, that they cared, that somebody listened and somebody cared. And I'm hoping that the Dearborn City Council similarly can put forward this resolution. We are against military aid to Israel because it would so positively affect so many members of the community in Dearborn. And they would feel like they had been heard. They would feel like, they would feel like someone cared. So many have families in Lebanon and Palestine that have been, that have undergone unspeakable trauma. And the trauma carries over even to Dearborn. And I sure hope, I sure hope that you can find it in your hearts to put this resolution, and it's a really small, short resolution, on the agenda, hopefully next time. Seven words, doesn't take time. We are against military aid to Israel. I can't tell you how much good it did in Hamtramck, and I hope to hear what your feelings are on this. Does anyone have any feedback they'd like to give, just in a few words?
Mr., Mr. Coleman, the members are free to ask questions to you or speak. They ask the chair for permission.
Oh, okay.
It's not for you to ask them questions to, to respond, okay?
Well, okay, that's fine. You may have seen in the news.
You have 15 seconds.
That a high official of the Israeli government just declared that there is no such thing as the Palestinian people. So that tells you something about how urgent this resolution is, in my opinion. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman, appreciate it. Okay, our last speaker is Professor Mos.
Muskan, Savobiyaswani, thank you, Mr. Serini. And thank you, members of the council. I appreciate this time that you've given me to speak to you. I'm here also to speak in favor of a resolution that says we are simply against military aid to Israel. We all know Israel is an apartheid state. We all know that Israel has actually stepped up its oppression against Palestinian people. As Blaine already mentioned, there are officials who actually say there is no such thing as Palestinian people. There are officials who say we want to obliterate Palestinian villages without any shame. In Hebron, settlers are actually urinating on Palestinians who walk by to go to their businesses and shops. It is a horrific situation. And this horrific situation finds its way right into Dearborn. I am a native of Iran, and I know that Israel not only kills and destroys Palestinian property, they kill and destroy Lebanese, they assassinate Iranians, and they threaten us by the minute, every minute. So Israel is not just a menace against Palestinians. It's a major thing that harms us all, all the time. A gesture by this, by this group here will be heartwarming to many of us who are the target of Israeli offensive. We hear when people get bombed and tortured and killed. It harms us. Your support, your, a few words of support, saying, yes, we know that we should be against military aid to Israel. It will heal so many wounds, here and abroad, here and even in Iran. People will know that there is a bunch of people who hear it, who get it, and they stand by us. And they speak up in the most difficult circumstances when Israel is the king. Israel is not the king, we are the king. We will win. History has shown that people like us will win. We just need you to speak up for those who can't speak for themselves. We need to say something when things are getting so extreme for Palestinian people. I lived in Palestine, I taught Palestinian children, and I remember the day I had to leave and how I cried and I didn't want to leave, but I had to leave. I never left, though, because every day of my life, I spent defending those children, and I am proud to have spent my life fighting for them.
You have 15 seconds.
All I'm asking for you is to not think this is just a symbolic gesture. It isn't. It'll help millions of people, particularly right here. It will heal many, many wounds. And I want to thank you for your time, and please give it, give it a thinking, and I hope to be, keep in touch. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Mos. Okay, at this point, we concluded our public comment for our first initial portion. And next, Mr. Clerk, if I'm correct, before we move to consent agenda, are there any items that any members wish to remove from the consent agenda and discuss individually?
Item eight.
Item eight.
Item eight. Okay, Mr. Clerk, can you remove item eight to the regular council agenda?
Yes, I will.
Okay, and Mr. Clerk, you now may proceed with the agenda.
Item number five, resolution of.
Mr. Clerk, I, I apologize. Do you need procedurally the remaining, offer and support on the remaining consent agenda?
Uh, that's a good question for our legal.
Legal counsel?
We need an offer and support for the rest of the items.
I would assume, yeah, you would need it, and then you can go forward. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, so any other members, we would need an offer and support for all the consent items that were offered by Councilman Eric, except item number eight. Supported by Councilman Hamud and offered by Councilwoman Herrick. At this time, we would need a roll call vote, Mr. Clerk.
Councilmember Enos?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamud?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Elswafi?
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick?
Yes.
Council President Serini?
Yes.
The resolution to approve the consent agenda passes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Now I can proceed. Next item.
First item will be item number eight, resolution by councilmembers Perez and Enos, awarding a sole source emergency contract purchase to A&amp;F Water Heater and Spa Service in the amount of $109,765 for Dunworth Pool boilers and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, so Dunworth Pool, before we get into Councilman, I know you had some questions, but just to give a background, the Dunworth Pool utilizes three separate boilers, one for each individual pool. The boilers were not functional at the time of inspection, and this item is to request the replacement of three of these boilers for $109,765. Councilman Hamud, you have some questions?
Yeah, my question had to do with whether we evaluated other options other than retaining the current existing heating system. So I understand what the boiler was, and we had some conversation at the COW about that. But, but the general question that Council President Serini especially brought up was, what kind of other technologies and options do we evaluate? And did we weigh those costs and opportunities versus the system that we're going to be implementing now, which is just continuing the same old system that we always had? So while we're spending $100,000 on it, you know? So we never got an assessment.
No, I, I'm sorry, we, I, we did get the email.
No, we received an email in regards to the purchasing aspect.
Right, okay.
We did not receive any emails in regards to any planning or evaluations that had been done by the Parks Department.
Right, but do you, for yourself, though, I was satisfied on the COW of that that was still the new technology as I asked.
It's a new.
Regarding how the, yeah, so I was satisfied, so did you have, you were asking for something other than that?
It's a new version of boiler.
Right, correct, I know, I agree.
The question was whether we're, whether other cities still use boilers in the year 2023 and kind of how that goes, so.
So there is, I sent an email this afternoon, too. There's a, there's another option that is a more energy-efficient option, similar type boiler. That boiler, those are about $70,000 apiece, so we'd be looking at around $225, plus install, plus we'd have to do some retrofitting with some of the pipes because, and we'd have to have some water lines added. So the expense would be significantly more. I would, I would guess probably in the 300-ish range. We don't have the space or probably the budget for solar because of the amount of water that we're heating. You're talking hundreds of thousands of gallons of water to heat. Geothermal would be very expensive as well, as I understand it. I'm not an expert, I don't know anybody that does it. I've checked with several other folks that have pools our size, and nobody's in that business of either solar or geothermal. I think, and it's mainly because it would just cost so much because of the amount of water that has to be heated.
Yeah, I guess the, the general question just has to do with, yeah, I guess I didn't see the email that was sent. You sent it to council this afternoon?
Council follow-up.
Okay, yeah, so in general, I think the, we haven't really seen anything in terms of the long-term strategy of the city. I know that there's, it was a kind of talk about reducing carbon footprint, so it's, I just, kind of, when we do projects that are going to last 20 years, I just wonder sometimes what kind of evaluations we actually do internally. So I guess I'll, I'll have to review that document, but, okay.
It's essentially what I just told you, the more energy-efficient option.
Yeah.
Which would, again, probably be roughly three times as much as we're spending now.
Right.
Life expectancy would be similar for 20-ish years.
And my understanding is the new boilers are still more efficient, the ones that we're buying than the ones we used to have.
Oh, yeah, well, I mean, they're 20 years old, so the technology obviously is even better than when it was installed, you know, 20 years ago.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hamud. Any other questions or comments on this item? Any objection to unanimous roll? Hearing and seeing none, unanimous roll be attached. Next item, please. Thank you.
Item number 16, resolution by councilmembers Enos and Herrick approving the minutes of the previous regular meeting of March 7th, 2023.
Okay, are there any additions, deletions, or modifications to the minutes? Okay, if not unanimous roll, be attached. Next item, please.
Item 17, ordinance number 23-1787, introduced by Councilmember Hamud. Synopsis and ordinance to amend the animals, chapter, chapter four of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn, by amending section 4-23 entitled License Required, resolution by councilmembers Enos and Perez to table the ordinance.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, just a comment on this. We did have discussions earlier with our, the animal shelter. Several of us had met with them, and they are asking for some more time to find on how much registrations there are. So at this time, for procedural aspect, I am requesting that Councilman Hamud, Councilman would withdraw his introduction, Councilman Enos withdraw his offer, and Councilman Perez to withdraw his support. And I have asked, instructed our executive secretary to kennel this for 90 days, which I gave the CEO time to prepare some comments on what would be a more efficient way. For our residents, we're trying to limit the number of dogs that be participating in one house. There has been some question in the city currently where we have another resolution that says if you have three, more than three, that are considered then to be a dog facility or a kennel. So they assumed that anything less than that would be illegal, and that's not codified. And many cities around us have limitations on animals, specifically dogs, in one residential house. So we are going to withdraw this for, at this time, to give us 90 days to meet with the animal shelter and see if they have some better proposals. Councilman Hamud, would you withdraw your introduction?
Yeah, support.
Okay, Councilman Enos, would you withdraw your offer?
Yeah, I withdraw my offer.
Councilman Perez, would you withdraw your support?
Yep.
Okay, so, Mr. Clerk, this will just be withdrawn and not, not in the other method of tabling, okay?
Okay.
Okay, next item, please.
Item 18, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Abraham, authorizing the finance director to recognize and appropriate a match on main grant in the amount of $25,000, which will be dispersed to Green Brain Comics LLC and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, the East Dearborn Downtown Development Authority, or the EDDDA, on behalf of Green Brain Comics LLC, applied for a Michigan Economic Development Corporation, or MEDC, match on main, which is M-O-N, MOM grant. The grant was awarded for $25,000 for costs associated with establishing a new business, including construction and branding. The MEDC Match on Main initiative is provided by MEDC Funding to support small businesses with their respective communities. It is being requested that the finance director be authorized to recognize the $25,000 grant in revenue and appropriate the same in the expense account where it is be distributed to Green Brain Comics LLC, and they are requesting immediate request. Any questions or comments on this item? Hearing and seeing none, unanimous roll be attached. Next item.
Item 19, resolution by councilmembers Hamud and Enos acknowledging a donation from Hype Athletics of fitness equipment to the Department of Public Works and Facilities.
Okay, this here is to acknowledge the donation of the fitness equipment from Hype Athletics. Hype Athletics generally donated fitness equipment for our Department of Public Works and Facilities. This donation includes Stairmasters, ellipticals, hand weights, racks, and benches, all to be provided for a new workout room in our DPW yard, and we really appreciate that. Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this? Okay, hearing and seeing none, a unanimous roll be attached. Next item, please.
Item number 20, resolution by councilmembers Hamud and Enos awarding a sole source contract to Russell Landscaping in the amount not to, not expected to exceed $43,800 for soccer field construction at Hemlock Park, also authorizing the finance director to establish revenue and corresponding expenditure budgets and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, and I think we have a photo of this soccer field, hopefully it'll put up here on the screen. But a contract to renovate the existing soccer fields at LaPierre Park and Hemlock Park was approved by the council on February 21st of 2023 and awarded to Russell Landscaping. This item is proposed for additional work for a secondary soccer field at the Hemlock Park with a cost of $43,800, bringing the new total of the contract to $165,150. The Recreation and Purchase Department, in conjunction with purchasing, recommends the sole source purchase for the design and construction to Russell Landscaping to be funded by our ARPA dollars and are requesting immediate effect. Any questions or comments on this item? Councilman Perez?
Yes, if I could, if I could have the recreation director just for a moment?
Yeah, absolutely.
Just, just a question, Mr. Fletcher. Go ahead and identify yourself. Thank you.
Sean Fletcher, Parks and Recreation Director.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher, for answering this. I know it was brought up at the committee of the whole, but I know that we have some residents that have brought this up to my attention anyways. I inquired about the softball diamond at Hemlock Park and what are the future uses for that softball diamond? I know we're making improvements at a lot of our parks, but I know, you know, soccer is very, very prominent, and a lot of people want to partake in that, but I'd just like to have an idea of what's going to happen with the softball diamond.
So the softball diamond, the outfield fence would be removed, the infield would be maintained, backstop would be maintained. It could still be used for T-ball and softball and baseball without an outfield. That's obviously not as desirable as having an outfield fence. But we are making, as you know, field improvements at Levigood. So the games that might have been at Hemlock would likely be scheduled at another field, including Levigood or King Boring could use more. We have lights, so we have ample amount of fields. You just may have people that would play a later game under the lights, which most players like playing under the lights, so.
So this will not.
I'm not one of those guys, but.
So this will not take away, then, from any sponsored or recreational leagues? So this will not take away then from any sponsored or recreational leagues that would have normally have played there in the past?
No, I mean, softball nationally is on a downward trend. Um, not as many people playing, uh, softball as there used to be. I mean, you probably remember in the heyday, there were hundreds and hundreds of teams. And I knew about Dearborn and I wasn't even in Dearborn, how, how big softball was here. So, uh, they just, you just don't have the, the volume of teams playing that you once had. And in, in the heyday, we had enough fields, so we still do now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Fletcher, I just wanted to leave a comment myself. Thank you, Councilman, and for the administration. I, I know I had brought it up, uh, just briefly, if the, if you look at the map, a lot of the residents on the Ruder side, uh, usually just had the track there. I know that's a little bit of a berm or buffer, but if you notice, there's very sparse amount of trees. So, uh, I'm not looking to impose any restrictions, but would urge the Recreation Department to try to find some type of screening element of shrubbery there, uh, for those residents because this is a much more intense use than was there before. There was no field there, it was, you know, very little walkable spots, really. And, uh, now you're gonna have full, full league soccer games there, so I would recommend that, uh, for the side closest to Hemlock, I know we have a buffer, but if we could add some of, uh, some shrubbery there or, uh, trees, it would make a significant difference to the residents on Ruder, and they've already, uh, had called the council requesting that. So Chief, hope you could take that back, see if there's something we can do as well.
Absolutely.
Council President, if I, if I may, just very quickly, what, what I think I wanted to, to highlight is that in the, uh, the Hemlock Park, what we heard from residents a lot from, uh, that attend the parks, and it's a very, if you ever go there on the weekend, you'll see a lot of our residents walking the track. And one of the, the suggested recommendations, which I, I'm happy, you know, under the leadership of, uh, Director Fletcher, is that, uh, they requested an additional soccer field, so.
Yeah.
Um, and then I also wanna remind council that, uh, you know, thanks to your, your vote here last council meeting, we made a large investment in our, our ballparks, which is, you know, the relining, uh, of our diamonds and some investments in, uh, in Levegood. So a lot of the, the new, the teams that will be moving into those locations where we're making those significant upgrades, I think they'll be very happy to know that, you know, they'll be walking into some really nice, well-kept and up-to-date, uh, fields. So just wanted to kinda add that in PETA as well.
No, no, we, I don't think anybody in the council would disagree with that. We were all at the event and we appreciate that, and we did allocate the funding and we're lock and step with you. My only concern is, like everything else, Chief, in the city, we have to balance the, the equities, the soccer players versus the homes that were existing there that didn't expect it that close. I'm in full support of the soccer field, I just wanna make sure that we either berm, berm it up with some shrubbery or maybe move it over slightly, just to be careful, to be conscious that the residents' homes, that's all.
Absolutely.
But I'm sure you'll, uh, that's something, if you look at the photo, you'll see what I'm talking about.
Absolutely, yep.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this item? Okay, hearing and seeing none, unanimous roll will be attached. Next item, please.
Item twenty-one, resolution by council members Abraham and Herrick awarding a competitive contract purchase to National Diagnostic Services, lowest responsive and responsible bid in the amount not to exceed thirty-six thousand dollars for cardiac and cancer screening services for the fire department and requesting immediate effect.
Yeah, as part of a competitive FEMA assistance, uh, to firefighters' grant, the, the Dearborn Fire Department was awarded the funding to screen firefighters for cancer and cardiac issues. This grant was accepted by council in September. The cardiac and cancer ultrasound screening physicals for all hundred-and-twenty of our Dearborn firefighters are designed to evaluate the structure and organ abilities that may affect, uh, their presence and possible of cancer as well. All screenings will be interpreted by a licensed cardiologist and radiologist and, uh, confidential health reports will be provided to the individual. This testing will allow firefighters to be screened potential, for potential diseases and help to ensure that their health and well-being throughout, uh, through early detection, ensuring that the health and wellness of the firefighters are our top priority. The requested amount is thirty-six thousand dollars and is requested that the council award that, uh, award is placed on immediate effect as the project is to be completed before May thirty-first. I don't know if, uh, the fire department wants to speak on this, Chief?
Good evening, Council President, Joe Murray, tenth fire chief, City of Dearborn. Um, I, yeah, so thank you for, uh, asking about this. Um, the cardiac, cardiac and cancer are the two leading cause of deaths for firefighters. They have higher rates of both cardiac, uh, disease and, uh, cancer. We've recently, in the last year, had three, uh, members and retired members diagnosed with cancer. So this is something that we're really, uh, trying to push with our membership, and we've been fortunate enough to receive grant funding for, uh, these pre-screenings and, um, uh, we, and this is part of our more comprehensive health and wellness program, uh, that we spoke about. And I wanted to bring up our new assistant chief, Kelly Meister. I know some of you have worked with her in the past, but, um, she got promoted in January and, and the health and wellness program is something that she's managing, and she's also right now enrolled in, uh, Eastern Michigan Staff and Command School, where she's writing a research paper on health and wellness programs for the fire department. And as a side note, she was elected the class president, so she's doing very good.
Excellent.
But I wanted you to meet her and, I don't know if you wanted to say anything?
Congratulations, yes, Kelly, thank you.
Um, thank you. I just wanna say hello and it's very nice meeting all of you, and I'm really looking forward to this opportunity to better our department and that will, of course, spill over into the rest of the community, so.
Absolutely. I can tell you as a family who had, uh, unfortunate situation to lose a parent and a sister over, uh, a health issue with cardiac, uh, issue and heart attack, um, as you say, Chief, and Kelly, the, the early detection is, is key. So I really appreciate this. I'm not sure if, Chief, you wrote this grant or did that go through our grant department now?
I, I did write this one.
You wrote this one, all right.
But I got, I got some good, good invite, good advice and then.
No, we appreciate it. I know that you were our leading grant writer before our grant department, but I do appreciate this. Uh, this opportunity is gonna help our, our fire, our fire department, uh, without question. So we, we do appreciate you, uh, looking for this for your men. We do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Council, Councilman Paris?
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Chief and Assistant Chief, for bringing this to us to begin with. And I know I've made some further inquiries on this. Uh, I think it's extremely important for our firefighters to have this screening and a wellness program in particular. Uh, one of the reasons, though, I will tell you forthwith that one of the big reasons why I really support this is I would really like the city to look at expanding this.
Yeah.
And of course, it depends on what happens with your project going forward, and we might, uh, result in some data in the future, how many people it's, uh, it's helped. Uh, I know the police department has had, uh, a lot of, uh, people that have gone through, they, they gotta work out, they gotta be physically fit. Uh, I know the DPW just got some, uh, athletic equipment or workout equipment, uh, but this should be made available to our employees because it's not only the wellness of our employees, but it's drawing employees to us, prospective employees in the future that we might hire. But the big thing too is not just our health issues, but retaining our employees, to having that ability to watch out for their personal wellness and keeping employees here, and that's so important right now. So I really support what you're doing and thank you so much for doing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Paris. Any other questions or comments on this item? Okay, unanimous roll will be attached. Next item. Thank you.
Item number twenty-two, resolution by council members Herrick and Paris authorizing additional expenditures to Allied Building Services Company of Detroit in the amount of eighty-one thousand four hundred and forty dollars, bringing the total contract value to one-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand seven hundred and forty dollars for mechanical systems inspections, non-contractual equipment repairs at Hubbard Manor East and Hubbard Manor West. Additionally, authorizing the finance director to appropriate two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars of the senior apartment fund retained earnings and requesting immediate effect.
All right, the city has a current contract with Allied Building Services and is requesting to add eighty-one thousand four hundred and forty dollars to purchase, to the purchase order for HVAC needed for office renovations at the Hubbard Manor East and West buildings. These renovations will allow our staff to be onsite and to move to, move away from the DAC to the buildings where they actually serve by July first of twenty-twenty-three this year. The, uh, relocation will improve staff access to the residents and allow for better management of the buildings. Is further requested that the council authorize the finance director to authorize an appropriate two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars of the senior apartment fund retained earnings to the senior department operating fund, project H-four-five-six-two-three. Is requested that the council authorize and award this with immediate effect as the project is set to be completed on or before June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-three. Any other questions or comments on this item? Hearing and seeing none, unanimous, uh, roll will be attached. Next item, please.
Item twenty-three, resolution by council members Herrick and Abraham granting the request, the request of Running Fit Events to conduct the fifteenth annual Martian Marathon Invasion of Races on Saturday, April fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three, from approximately seven AM to three PM with assistance from the police department and subject to certain stipulations. Also requesting that the police chief be authorized to make application and sign all necessary documents relating to the issuance of necessary state and county permits and requesting immediate effect.
All right, thank you, George. Uh, we do have a guest speaker. I'm gonna read this first and we'll turn it over to you, okay? The mission of the Martian Marathon Invasion of Races event is to promote, uh, healthy lifestyles for adults and especially children with long-term goal ending of, of ending school, uh, child obesity and diseases that are sedimary to the lifestyle and poor nutrition choices. Partial proceeds of the twenty-twenty-three event will go to benefit Dearborn Parks and Recreation Youth Partnership Athletic Organizations. Run Fit, or RF, will conduct the fifteenth annual Martian Marathon Invasion of Races on Saturday, April fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three, with a goal of three thousand participants. All five Martian Marathon races will begin and end in the main parking lot of Ford Field. The marathon of twenty-six miles will begin at seven fifteen PM, the five K and ten, I'm sorry, AM, yes, thank you. Seven fifteen AM, thank you. And, uh, the five K and ten K will begin at eight AM and eight fifteen AM respectively. The half marathon will begin at eight forty-five, and the kids' one-point-two-mile marathon will start at eleven forty. With the result of Cherry Hill, uh, closure between ten and fifteen minutes between eight oh five and eight fifteen, uh, RNE Events agrees to reimburse the City of Dearborn for its, for the costs incurred for our DPW and police services and are requesting immediate, uh, requests. Yes, Councilwoman Herrick?
Um, thank you. Before our guest speaker, I think we have another guest speaker that should come up to the microphone too, to be on the camera, but.
Yes.
Um, I wanted to, I wanted to say thank you for, um, Running Fit's continued participation in, in organizing this run here in Dearborn each year. We get, um, thousands of visitors who come, um, and many are colorfully dressed, um, and run through our streets, but importantly, in addition to, uh, the fitness aspect of, of promoting health and fitness and having the different runs for different ages and different, um, abilities, um, these folks come to Dearborn, they see the best that we have to offer in our business districts, they come, they stay, they spend their money here shopping and dining, and, um, they promote kind of a, a general, uh, overall upbeat feel to the city that day. It is so much fun to see you here, so thank you so much.
Thank you. So go ahead and you can, uh, you wanted to say some words?
Thank you so much.
You got it.
Um, good evening to you, Mayor Hamud, City Council President, and all members of the City Council. I come before you this evening representing my fellow Martian brethren to remind you of the quickly approaching event of the intergalactic year, the Martian Invasion of Races. This celebrated event scheduled to take place on April fifteenth will have participants converge on Dearborn from all throughout Michigan and the Midwest. Some runners, like myself, will travel from much further away. The Martian Invasion of Races consists of five different events. There's the traditional marathon, the half marathon, the ten K, the five K, and the shorter kids' marathon. Registration for the events is underway at MartianRaces.com. I invite and encourage all of you, even as participants, to come out and enjoy what promises to be an out-of-this-world event. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I just wanted to add, and our, our director is here, um, he might add something. I covered the show a few times, I've been there, and I know that at some points we were closer to four and five thousand people. Uh, you guys do a tremendous job, the medals are tasteful, the kids have a great time. I think it's a great event, very well organized, so, uh, we do, uh, really appreciate that. Director, do you have anything to add to it?
The only thing I wanted to add is.
This is your first one? Or no?
It's the second one.
Did you do the second one?
Uh, this would be my second, right?
Second one?
It was last year, right?
I don't know.
Do we have, we had a race last year, right? Yeah, this would be, I've been here a year, man.
Well, that's right.
See? Uh, the only thing I wanted to add is we did, um, provide, uh, prior to the meeting, uh, just a breakdown of the city expenses that, uh, RF events would.
See, that one we got.
Yeah, no, we, we appreciate that.
So.
Yeah, we appreciate that.
Council President, if I may?
Yes, Chief?
On behalf of the mayor, we're really excited, uh, uh, as usual, to host the Martian Marathon. It's always great to see the, as, as Councilwoman Herrick mentioned, the colorful, but also our patrons coming into the City of Dearborn, so we encourage everybody to come down to the City of Dearborn, spend your money, we love it, um, and, uh, thank you again.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Director, for that. Appreciate it.
I see the route runs by your house, Council President.
It does. We talked to about the closures, we're good. We're good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you guys so much. Wish you a successful event.
Thank you so much.
Are any other questions or comments on this item? Okay, next item, please.
Item twenty-four, resolution by council members Herrick and Hamud designating the month of March twenty-twenty-three as Disability Awareness Month and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, this resolution was brought forward by Council President Pro Temp Herrick and Councilwoman. I know you wanted to read this into the record? Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Disa, twenty-two thirty-three disability awarema, excuse me, um, twenty-two thirty-three Disability Awareness Month is taking place in March, as it always does, and, um, to celebrate and recognize people with disabilities. So our resolution reads, "Be it further, whereas disability is a natural part of the human experience and in no way diminishes the right of individuals with disabilities to live independently, enjoy self-determination, make choices, contribute to society, and experience fully in the economic, political, social, cultural, and educational mainstream of American society. Be it further, family members, friends, and members of the Dearborn community can play a central role in enhancing the lives of people with disabilities. Be it further, public and private employers are encouraged to acknowledge the capabilities of people with disabilities to be engaged in competitive work in inclusive settings. Be it further, the goals of Dearborn include providing individuals with disabilities the opportunities to live in a community where such individuals can exercise their full rights and responsibilities as citizens, pursue meaningful and productive lives, contribute to their family, community, state, and nation, and achieve full inclusion in society. Be it further, citizens of Dearborn should do all in their power to recognize the value and intersectionality of the disability experience in our lives and the valued role it has in our rich diversity, recognize the barriers presented to those with disabilities, create ways to include everyone, especially those with developmental disabilities, to be fully included in all aspects of life, understand the losses, financial, spiritual, human rights, contributions to community and otherwise, when our communities segregate and create barriers for those with disabilities. Demand that policymakers create inclusive, equitable policies for, and systems for all. Therefore, be it resolved, that the members of the thirty-fourth City Council of the City of Dearborn do hereby designate the month of March twenty-twenty-three as Disability Awareness Month to celebrate and recognize people with disabilities. Be it further, this, that this resolution be given immediate effect."
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any questions or comments on this item?
I do have one more quick comment.
Absolutely, Councilwoman.
Thank you. I would like to, um, thank, um, Services to Enhance Potential, STEP, uh, the nonprofit organization that's headquartered here in Dearborn and provides, um, education, um, occupational opportunities, um, and, uh, helps, uh, those with disabilities become independent, to live on their own, or to the best of their own abilities. And, um, their executive director, uh, worked with me on, on the resolution, um, he is an advocate for the people that their organization serves, and, um, he also is serving on our the people that their organization serves, and he also is serving on our Disability Awareness Commission. So, anybody who has a family member, friend, or is interested, expertise, or is interested in assisting with Dearborn's programs to ensure that those with disabilities receive the services that they need through partnerships with the city of Dearborn, know that you can join the Disability Awareness Commission. Information about that is on the city of Dearborn's website, and for any one of our commissions, there's an application that you can, summary that you can complete and apply through the mayor's office. So, I'd like to thank everyone who's serving on that commission currently. I know that at least one member of their commission is here in the audience tonight, and again, I thank STEP for the effort to work with us on the resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman Herrick. Unanimous roll will be attached, next item.
Item number 25, resolution by Councilmember Hamud and Herrick, concurring that the Office of Management and Budget include MENA, or MENA, as a race and ethnicity category within federal data collection methods and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, and this resolution was brought forward by Councilwoman, Councilman Hamud, Councilman Hamud, would you like to read this into the record?
Yeah, I just want to tell Council, there's a revised version from what's in the backup, it's in the front page of your binder, because we're doing edits pretty much up until the meeting. So, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I'm going to basically pull out the most important paragraphs. So, the federal government does not currently collect or produce data on the race and ethnicity of Middle Eastern or North African populations, and has not updated its standards for data collection on race and ethnicity since 1997. The data on race and ethnicity is a crucial tool for communities to advocate for protection under the Voting Rights Act, assistance under the Small Business Act, and healthcare services under the Public Health Service Act, just to name a few federally-supported programs that are connected to the OMB's assessment of this. So, it's, there's something called SPD-15, which is Statistical Policy Directive. Again, I'm not going to get into all the details. So, the city of Dearborn has taken steps to promote equality and equity in its provision of services and protections for all communities through additional language access initiatives, and would benefit greatly from being able to identify other inequities such as health, education, or employment experienced by MENA populations in all federal surveys and information collections. We have Access and the Inter-Cultural Community Center of Dearborn, or ICCD, are advocating for the OMB, the Office of Management and Budget, or, yeah, Office of Management and Budget, yep, to require that all federally-conducted and supported data collection activities, including the decennial census, to collect data on race and ethnicity through a combined question that includes Middle Eastern and North African response category. Be it further, collecting racial and ethnic data on MENA populations will ensure that federal, state, and local governments recognize and meet the needs of all communities. So, we're providing a letter of support to local nonprofits and advocacy groups that are working to push the federal government to include us. I would identify as MENA if I could. So, it'll help in the future with bringing federal tax dollars, or federal spending dollars to the city to address needs of specific communities that do live here, especially, you know, new immigrants and things like that. It falls through the cracks right now because technically it doesn't exist because there's no category. So, we have some people here from Access, the Council President.
Yeah, one second, yeah, yeah. You're good?
Yeah, then, yeah.
Okay, Councilwoman Herrick? Yeah, we're going to get to everybody that wants to speak. Councilwoman Herrick?
Thank you. I was pleased to work with Councilman Hamud on bringing this resolution forward. Back in 2009, I actually was employed by the city of Dearborn at the time in the Communications Office, working as liaison to the Census Bureau. And then I also worked with the Census Bureau directly on the count enumeration. And I was surprised at the time to learn that there was not a category, a box that those with the MENA, Middle Eastern or North African, North African heritage could check. So, they were counted as white. They currently are counted as white in all the data that's collected by the Census Bureau. And most people have heard, when the census is being taken, how important it is that everybody be counted because it brings federal dollars back to the local community. And oftentimes, those dollars are designated because of specific needs within the community. And in this case, Dearborn and any other place that there is a significant MENA population is missing out on funding and resources for things like healthcare, education, even arts and humanities and cultural funding to lift those communities up. And so, back in 2009, I questioned, why is this even happening? You know, when people said, there's not a box for me to check, and I'd explain, you have to check the white box. And so, I'm so pleased after all these years and my questioning over time, you know, how can this happen that we update the census form, and now we have the opportunity to do this? I think that one of our guests is probably going to talk about that there's a public comment period happening right now, that the federal government is asking for people, the general population, to give feedback on this being important to them, that this is something that they need to do, is add this to the census forms and the other research that they conduct. So, I urge anybody that is interested to please go online to the government website to go ahead and give feedback about this being something that's important to you and to our city and to the country.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We have a speaker here. Step forward, and you can just state your name and address to record. Thank you for coming.
Hello, my name is Sarah, is my address is 2651. So, I am with Access, and thank you for bringing awareness to a really important issue that not only affects our communities, but communities like ours across this country. So, January 26th is when the federal government actually came down with a new rule stating that they were going to revise Statistical Policy Directive Number 15. So, this directive is really important in the sense that it defines the bare minimum standards for race and ethnicity data collection for all federal agencies. So, currently, one of the revisions is that they want to add a Middle Eastern and North African race and ethnicity category. So, historically speaking, we know that MENA communities have been underrepresented, underserved, and severely undercounted. So, at this point, it's actually seen as a civil rights issue. We are not able to quantify the inequities that our students face in education at all levels. We also have seen our data in terms of healthcare and research aggregated with the white population, when we know that MENA communities are adversely affected by cancer, heart disease, as was being said before, and diabetes at a much higher rate than white populations. We've also saw during the pandemic, during the COVID-19 pandemic, that small business owners that were MENA did not have access to minority-specific loans. So, not having this category really has been a barrier. So, I'm just here to urge the City Council and other people that like to submit a public comment to do so in support of getting a Middle Eastern, North African race and ethnicity category, and you can do that through the federal register. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and appreciate Access and all the work they do in the community. Thank you. Anyone else here to speak on this topic? Please step forward and state your name and address for record.
Hello, everyone, Bilal Hamud, 16860 West Sutter Drive. I'm here today in the capacity as Vice President of the ICCD. I've been up here before, and I've talked about this issue extensively. First off, I just want to say, the work that Access has been doing on the, on the national scale to push this has been incredible. To see such a movement, I think 7,500 or so comments have already been submitted into the public portal. The goal is to get 1,000, 10,000 by the April 12th deadline. And Sarah's done an amazing job, and the whole team, kind of giving you the rundown of what the specifics look like and why this is so, so important. But I will just add that, if we're talking about just our education systems, the amount of funding we're going to see is an increase from this small checkbox is significant, significant enough to not only improve the lives of all the students in our schools, but even potentially build a new high school. We're talking about economic support for small businesses on a scale that the city probably hasn't seen in decades. So, when we talk about the impact of this, especially with a city that has such a large population of MENA residents, it's, as Sarah said, uncalculable. But I just want to say thank you all for considering this resolution. I encourage everyone to apply public comment. It is a really simple process, two minutes max to get your public comment submitted. It goes a long way, and I'm looking forward to seeing this hopefully go through, the Office of OMB take this on as a, as a fully adopted resolution for the census. I thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Any other comments or questions on this item? Okay, here and see, and none of unanimous roll will be attached. Next item, please.
We have a number of walk-on items. The first one is number 26, resolution in need of offering support, recommending an extension of professional services agreement with August Law, P L L C, for the case of Hussein Najee versus the city of Dearborn, at all, at a rate of $300 per hour and the amount of $100,000 for the, from the general fund balance to the fleet and general legal fees account to assist against the lawsuit and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. On March 8th of 2023, the city was served with the summons of complaint, the complaint in the Civil Rights Action for damages pursuant to 42 U.S.C. 1983, Fourth and Fourteenth Amendments of the United States Constitution and related state claims. It is extremely important that the city vigorously defends this lawsuit. Therefore, the legal department is recommending that council authorize an extension of professional services agreement with August Law, P L L C, at a rate of $300 an hour and the amount of not exceed $100,000 to assist in the defense of this matter, the support of August Law and P L L C, and adding to the department's internal proficiency handling of the civil rights lawsuits will allow the city to best defend the lawsuit and is requesting immediate effect. We would need an offer on this? Offered by Councilman Paris?
Support.
Supported by Councilman Enos? Any questions or comments? Okay, unanimous roll will be attached, next item, please.
Item 27, resolution in need of offering support, appointing Ibrahim Alabad to the Board of Trustees Retirement System, Police and Fire Employees, Chapter 23, with the term ending January 1st, 2026, and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, this is a recommendation for approval and confirmation of appointment of Ibrahim Alabad to serve on the Board of Trustees Retirement Service for Fire and Police Employees, Chapter 23, for a three-year term. Failure of a multi-member body appointee to possess the required qualifications of appointment by this charter or law shall result that that member's immediate vacancy from the multi-member body be terminated from their appointment. The term will end January 1st of 2026 and is requesting immediate effect. We do need an offer and support on this. Councilman Paris?
Do you have a question real quick on this?
Councilman, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
This appointment to the board, is this the citizen vacancy for the board, from what I understand?
That's correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure on that. I will offer them.
Offered by Councilman Paris, supported by Councilwoman Herrick. Any questions or comments? Okay, unanimous roll will be attached, next item.
Item 26, resolution in need of offering support, appointing Khalid Kaye to the Local Officials Compensation Commission, with the term ending January 19th, 2031, and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, this is a recommendation for confirmation and approval of appointment of Khalid Kaye to serve on the Local Officials Compensation Commission Board for a seven-year term. Again, failure of a multi-member body appointee to possess the required qualifications for the appointment of this charter or, or law shall result in the member's immediate vacation of the body they were appointed to. The term will end of January-
Awesome.
Yeah, one second, Councilman, I'll, I'll let you speak right after. The term ending January 19th, 2031, and immediate effect is being requested, we would need an offer and support. At first, Councilman Elsoafi, you had a comment?
I was going to offer it.
Yeah, absolutely. Offered by Councilman Elsoafi, supported by Councilman Hamud. Any questions or comments? Unanimous roll will be attached, next item, please.
Item 29, resolution in need of offering support, appointing Nadia Berry to the Local Officials Compensation Commission, with the term ending January 19th, 2031, and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, this recommendation for approval and confirmation, appointment of Nadia Berry to serve on the Local Officials Compensation Commission for a seven-year term. Again, this term will end on January 19th of 2031, and immediate request is being requested. And we have an offer by Councilman Hamud?
I'll support.
Supported by Councilman Abraham. Any questions or comments about it? Okay, unanimous roll will be attached, next item.
Nothing further for the agenda for the clerk's office.
Okay, so at this time, nothing else from the, no other items, correct?
No other items.
Okay, so this time we'll begin with the council. I have a few things, and I'll turn over to my colleagues. Just, I guess, like I said, I was, I guess I got the job of the happy birthday. We used to have a designated one, but of course, I want to, you know, recognize our mayor for his birthday last Sunday, and we wish him a happy, I don't know, 30, chief of the 32, 33? 33? Yeah, 33. So, happy birthday to mayor watching, at home hopefully, and resting, so we do appreciate it. Happy birthday. And then, of course, Chief Murray, you have a birthday coming up. Joseph Murray, tremendous chief and firefighter. Many of the members do know, and a lot of people in our residents know, that Chief was one of our lead writers of getting grants in the city for many, many years, and had a lot of insight, highly educated, with a PhD, and has done a tremendous job with the fire department, helped bring a lot of resources to our fire department. Chief, enjoy your, your birthday. And, thank you. Also, we have our clerk, who we did not have a meeting last week, and Mr. Deraney, we're not going to mention your age, but we want to tell you happy birthday.
Thanks, thanks for both of you.
George, we appreciate, we appreciate all you do. We know you do a lot of hard work there, and the clerk's department has made tremendous strides over the years. I have made that publicly commented, we appreciate your work, and enjoy your, I hope you did enjoy your birthday.
I did, thank you.
All right, good, good. Now that I cleared the birthdays, I just, a couple of things I wanted to make sure residents knew, from our DPW yard, thanks. We have our public service days that had begun on March 13th, so everyone to remember that is from, Director Hawkins, you want to come up on that? Yeah, if you don't mind. I just want to make sure I got the time right. That also coincides with our yard and waste collection. But I wanted to make sure the residents know the time. A lot of people get confused that once the garbage is gone, that you can park your car in the street, that's a no-no, right?
Yes, good evening, Council President, Council. Public service days have once again started. We wish that you would keep your vehicles, or we need you to keep your vehicles off the street from 7:00 AM till 4:00 PM, so that we can do street sweeping, street repair. It's not necessarily about the garbage, it's about maintaining roads as well. So, please, please keep your vehicles off the street on your service day.
Right. And then the yard waste collection is back up as well. A lot of people might had a leftover bag or so from last year, now's the time to put it out, and it runs through December 15th, correct?
That is correct. We were back collecting yard waste, as well as bundled brush and things from, you know, potential storms. Just put it in three-foot bundles, put it out to the curb, and we will pick it up.
Absolutely. Yep. One more thing, too, in regards to the garbage collection, a lot of the residents are not sure, too, we do have, the bulk pickup is, is, they can put stuff outside of the cans for like a broken cable or so on and so forth. Can you speak to that? Because a lot of people are not so sure about what they-
Yes, that is correct. The city of Dearborn has paid for bulk collection service. You can set items next to the can. We hope that they're not bagged food items, but chairs, tables, household items, please no tires or paint cans or any hazardous waste, but yes, we will pick up items next to the can.
Excellent. Councilman Abraham?
Yeah, I just, most of, if not all, of the local streets have been, picked up the storm debris from the storm three weeks ago that caused lots of power outage down branches and stuff. I do see still bundles of branches along some of the county roads. Is, how do we deal with that? I-
Yep.
In the median and on the sidewalk side easements, I see a lot of bundles.
Yes, we've reached out to them, and we're going to get them addressed if they need assistance. We have worked with the county considerably on quite a few projects in the past year, so if they're unable, we will take care of it, and hopefully-
Yeah, specifically, you know, I, I see them at the high school on Outer Drive, along the Outer Drive Road there. Lots of big branches that obviously were either pushed from the sidewalk or pushed from the road out to the easement. We really need to get that out of there. I don't, when I say we, I mean coordinating locally with the county.
That's no problem, we'll, we'll address it.
Thank you, Councilman. We have a couple more comments on the same subject. Councilman Paris?
Thank you, Council President. If I could, just a reminder for residents, too, and you can clarify this if I'm mistaken on any of this information, I see a lot of neighborhoods with garbage cans in the street. And it's my understanding that obviously it is, especially because of public service days, because it creates a hindrance, that you are not allowed to put your garbage or your rubbish or recyclables in the roadway for the first item. And then, second of all, too, is I see a lot of my neighbors in the area that I live, and then plus there are other areas of town, that are also putting their trash receptacles in the recycling way too early, not supposed to be out until 5 o'clock, I believe, the night before the trash pickup. And one item that I believe that a lot of people are not aware of, you're also supposed to take your items that you left out at the curb, your containers, and put them back away before 12:00 midnight of the day of your garbage pickup. And I see this a lot, and it's public service days in particular, but just keep in mind, too, that a lot of people use those residential streets, East End in particular, such narrow streets, you can't get through the streets to begin with, so don't put your receptacles out on the street. And I just wanted to make sure I was correct on those.
All three of those are correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Paris. Councilwoman Herrick?
Just a couple of things. One is, if folks are parking in their driveways, and I know that this is difficult sometimes, but please try to keep the sidewalk clear. Families go by, kids with children, small children, and it is a law, there, you can be ticketed if you're blocking the sidewalk, and I know, again, I know sometimes we have to be a little lenient because of our crowded streets, et cetera. But this is Disability Awareness Month, and for folks that need the sidewalk to get through, that's why there's a stiff penalty if you block the sidewalk with your car, because of the disability concerns. And then also, this is a good time to remind folks about recycling. Unfortunately, a lot of our streets recycling ends up in landfill because it gets contaminated with things that don't belong in those bins. And I just would like a reminder, on our city website, is there a place where they can click and look at that nice graphic of all the things that should or should not go into the recycling bin?
Yes, there is a graphic there, but there's also a graphic on the lid of the recycling can. If you look at the lid, it will tell you what items can go in and which can't. But if your can is old enough to have that faded out, you're more than welcome to go to the website.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Director, appreciate it. Thank you, we're good. Yeah, appreciate it. Just wanted to remind everybody, the spring is coming, and a lot of people are working outside in their homes and tidying up, and just wanted to make sure they remind- and just wanted to make sure they remind about the public service days. I wanted to just make a reminder to wish everybody that it will be observing a very blessed and joyous Ramadan holiday that will begin this week on Thursday. It's a tremendous time for me and my family, family gatherings, and a really blessed and holy month. So I, everyone that is observing, I'd like to wish them a very happy Ramadan. I'd like to turn over to my colleagues. Anybody on the council have something they'd like to? Yeah? Councilwoman Herrick?
Thank you. Early in the public comments at the beginning of the meeting, a representative from the Dearborn Community Fund talked about April is Arts Month in Dearborn. We've been celebrating Arts Month in Dearborn for at least eight years now, and it's a wonderful partnership with the Dearborn Public Schools and local artists and art organizations that we have art installations and activities across the city. We have galleries that folks sometimes don't even realize that we have at Henry Ford College and U of M Dearborn, as well as the Pajewski Gallery at the Performing Arts Center, and a couple other galleries here in town. But right now, at the Pajewski Gallery at the Community Performing Arts Center, through April fifteenth is our student art show in collaboration with the Dearborn Public Schools. And in the gallery itself is our Student Artist of the Year, the high school seniors who have been selected by their teachers at each of the public high schools. They're amazingly talented young people, and so there's an exhibit from each student of the year from the high schools that you can see in the gallery. So if you get a chance, stop by the Performing Arts Center and check out the amazing talented talents of our Dearborn students through April fifteenth. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Hamud?
Yeah, so I think earlier in the meeting, we discussed the follow-up for item number eight. And I checked with our admin, and we did not receive the item, so I guess maybe got stuck somewhere in council follow-up in the mayor's office. So I guess if the, if you guys could send that forward from the mayor's office, that would be helpful. So, that's one. And then two is, it has been seven months since we passed the sewer study RFP. We were promised six-month updates, so we are overdue. And even giving a little bit of leeway time for them in December, assuming they're all off on holiday, we are still a little bit past that, so I guess my question to administration would be if and when we're going to receive our next OHM update on what the current status is of the sewer study.
Mayor?
I think it's seven months since you approved the contract, maybe not seven months technically since the project started. And so, I'll check with DPW and Engineering and report back up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman, anything else?
That's it.
Okay, Councilman Paris?
Thank you for that again, Council President. Also want to recognize, coming up within the period of time before our next council person, or council meeting, I'm sorry, coming up, that we also have a number of Christian-based religion for Lent and Easter. You know, holidays are coming up, and I appreciate bringing up Ramadan, which is going to go into another subject for me, but also the Orthodox religions, and then Jewish Passover is coming up also. The reason why I'm bringing these other religions up, too, is because we do have a program within the city right now through City Beautiful that is recognizing all the religions that are celebrating, you know, within this next month, that you may have some displays up at your homes, and you have the ability then to, sorry to say, and nominate yourself if you want to do that, if you think you have a nice display and you'd like to be recognized for that from the City Beautiful Commission. We do have a commissioner here that's with us tonight. But also, if you have your neighbors or see other residences throughout the city that may deserve some recognition because of the display that they have, similar to what we do during the Christmas holidays. And there is on the city website some information, and City Beautiful does have that information out that we can go ahead and make that nomination and send it in, and they'll go ahead, if I'm not mistaken, go ahead and make their rounds through the city and see who might be deserving of that recognition. So I just wanted to say that, so, thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that, thank you. Anything else from, Councilwoman, you have something to add? Councilwoman Herrick?
Thank you. I almost forgot, the Dearborn Historical Museum asked that we remind residents and all those who are interested in the programming that's coming up at the Dearborn Historical Museum. On March twenty-fourth this week is an opportunity to look at some of Henry Ford collection, get the chance to look at authentic Henry Ford artifacts. That's from six to eight PM at the Ross House. And usually, their programming is free, but in this particular case, it's five dollars for non-members who have not joined the Historical Museum, and free to those who have joined. And then, the additional programming, you can see on their social media, on, especially on their Facebook page and their website, if you'd like to see what else is coming up at the museum. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Councilman. Anything else from anybody and a member of council? You do, Councilman Paris?
And I apologize, just bringing up a lot of different items. I just wanted to be known that last night I had the opportunity with my wife to attend the Michigan Public Service Commission hearing at Fortson High School at five-thirty. Probably several hundred people attended last night. It was interesting to hear some of the comments about people that had a impact on their lives due to the power outages with DTE, due to the ice storm, and then also the snow, you know, not too many days thereafter. You really had to listen to some of the comments. We were impacted here in Dearborn, but I'll tell you what, some of the other communities outside of us, especially in Detroit, were greatly impacted. And just to hear story after story after story about people, especially persons with disability month, people that need their medications, people that need oxygen tanks, people that are disabled, can't get in and out of their homes. A lot of these instances were brought up, and they were heartfelt. One thing that I did want to make mention of this, something that I heard from that meeting last night, there were three representatives or members of the Public Service Commission. It was revealed by one of the commissioners that there is going to be an independent audit of DTE. I believe it started last Monday, that they're looking into some of the finances for DTE. I'm only saying that because I know DTE is apparently asking for rate increases. And for, one of the comments that I heard that really made an impact on me is that DTE is not the victim, we are the victim. So what I can say is the MPSC is looking for comments from the public. I know that we really expended a lot of resources trying to take care of our residents during this period of time. I know I had some contact with the administration through our neighborhood liaisons also for a number of issues that we had in our own community, but there, hopefully, because this is happening more and more, that we have the ability to reach out through the state or regionally, or even through the county. DTE is a private company, privately owned, they're not publicly owned. If we somehow, as a community, as a city, can recoup some of our losses, maybe not just for the residents, but for those in our community, whether it's the police and fire, whether it's DPW, whether it's the number of people that we have for volunteers, we're incurring costs also. You know, we're in the same position, we're members of this community, too. So we are incurring costs. If there's somehow to mitigate that or minimize the impact to our city, our community, that I would really appreciate if we jointly, as a community, look into some of these measures that maybe we can recoup some of our losses for our residents and for our city at large. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Paris. Okay, anything from the administration? Mayor?
Good evening, Council. I'm sorry, it's the State of the County, which was hosted here in the city of Dearborn. I think you all largely spoke to the events that are ongoing. The Dearborn Awards for the springtime decorations for the various folks celebrating in the various faith traditions. It's extremely exciting, it's the first time in history that it's happening in our city. And I think it'll move along with the lunar calendar with these religious holidays as they move around. So we're really excited for that. And we had the exciting announcement, I don't know if it was mentioned regarding the parks, so thirty million dollar announcement investing in our parks. You know, we use the ARPA dollars, we use, and then we grant matching, so three dollars for every one dollar we invested from the federal government, from the state government, and through CDBG dollars. So those grants will largely be used to help invest in our parks all across the city of Dearborn, as well as in Camp Dearborn, which I think is also extremely important. We have a survey online, which you can fill out, to tell us about a park that you frequent, some amenities that you would like to see at a park near you. To date, we have, I think, I want to say over seven hundred respondents. The Camp Dearborn community is very engaged, I think they're dominating the comments with like five hundred of those seven hundred, and the majority of those have to do with town village. And so I really would like to encourage everybody who has something to say outside of Camp Dearborn to also participate, because it helps us in determining what amenities you're also looking for in a park near you or a park that you frequent. And lastly, just a congratulations to the two winners, the twenty-twenty-three event Patrick awardees, I don't know if it was mentioned, at the Dearborn Parks and Recreation Youth Sports Partnership, the annual award ceremony. So you have Noah Dobert from Dearborn High School, and Cecilla Viddy from Divine Child. So congratulations to both of them.
Excellent, thank you, Mayor. Okay, anything from Mr. Clerk?
You know, I'd just like to wish my wife's grandmother a happy birthday. This Saturday, she turns a hundred and four. So congratulations to her, and.
That's great.
It's just amazing, we had a big party for her a couple of weeks ago, and her brain is just as sound as it was forty, fifty, sixty years ago, so.
That's tremendous.
Happy birthday, Noah.
That's tremendous, thank you. Happy birthday to her from the council, absolutely. All right, at this time, we will open it up to our public comment section. Again, remind everyone, there is a three-minute limitation, and it's matters pertaining to city business. At this time, you can either fill out a comment card or step forward and state your name and address for the record. Okay. If we don't have, okay. Yes, absolutely.
My name is Renee Rossler, I live at two-one-seven-one-zero Morley. Thank you, Council, Mayor. I'm glad to see you here in person. I've seen you quite a bit on TV promoting our city events, the restaurant week, you just mentioned the parks that you're gonna be renovating with the grant dollars that you've gotten. I was one, I'm Diane Purdy's daughter, I've written you letters, my sister has written you letters, we're following you around, it seems like. We want to get your attention, and we want to make our situation that I'm gonna mention to you a high priority amongst all this other stuff, okay? On behalf of the retirees, my mom, she's a city retiree, worked for the police department. As you know, she has served her time, received a retirement package, which in fact was changed at the beginning of this year. All of these wonderful council women and men have heard our situation, we are getting the word out, just like you are getting the events out. I like coming to these meetings because I'm learning a lot. I learned there's a new soccer field coming to Hemlock that all the residents had to do is make a request. Good. I understand we're gonna be paying for three boilers at Dunworth Pool. If we don't pay for them, we don't get to swim. That's the same for the retirees, that each one is different. It's the program, or their illnesses or pills that they have to take.
Renee, I apologize, right here. I would like, yeah, do you want to address the council? I know you're addressing the mayor.
I.
It is the council meeting, though, so I mean.
Well, I am addressing the mayor.
I understand, but this, this form is for the council.
But you know, I've been here before with the same situation.
I understand, I understand. I'd just like you to address the council, your comments are for the mayor, we understand that, but I don't, this is not the form to address the mayor directly. So I'd like you to address the council, the mayor's here, he's hearing you. So if you continue, okay?
So, Mayor, as I was saying, I've had this conversation with a numerous amount of people. I think the decision that you made has to be reevaluated, relooked at. It's not a one-size-fits-all for everybody, everybody has a different situation. And now is a good time to look at it, because we're already past the first quarter. Now we're getting into the fourth month of the year, and things are getting worse and harder. And I don't think, unless you see or feel what is going on with each individual person, how, what is being affected now. The mayor promised that he would call my mom last week, and he did. So thank you very much for doing that. He kept his word, and I'm expecting you to keep your word in evaluating the situation to make things better. I would like to make, see my mother make it into the three-digit number, just like George Deraney's mother-in-law. I would like her to go to the parades, go to the parks, go to these things. But without some help financially, which is what she deserves and what she received and is now gone, or very little and very limited in what she can do, it's a struggle for her. You did call, and you did the right thing, and you came to, made her very happy that you did. But I talk to her every day, and I want to continue to talk to her every day for a very long time. And happy birthday to you, we understand you just turned thirty-three, but there's gonna be a time that you're gonna be there, too. You will feel it if you are in the same place. Years ago, when my mom worked here, she didn't need as much medical care, which she does now. So hopefully, by the time you all retire, you get to where you have to be, you are not gonna be promised something and then taken.
You have fifteen seconds.
These retirees have a, they're, their gut, it's just sickening for them to decide every day how they're gonna get through this. And my mom now cannot, there's so many other things that you don't know that has come up since you talked to her Friday, that now she's gotta ask her doctors for medicine, just samples, just to get to the next thing. She can't afford, on a limited income, or, you know, what she has.
Sorry, your time has expired.
So I hope you are making a consideration that we're past the first quarter, and we hope that we're gonna come to a resolution.
Thank you, and I appreciate it.
If I may, Council President?
Yes, Mayor.
So, thank you, thank you for being here, and we'll continue to work on the individual case. I wouldn't get into specific, I won't get into specifics as it relates to your mother's case. I'll just speak broadly. I think, you know, the first thing I want to state is, I take every decision that I make very dearly. Nothing I do coming into office I take for granted, and decisions that we make, we make based on the information that we have and the resources that we have allocated as a city. And so just to recap, when we came in, the voters also voted down a supplemental operating village. And that meant over, you know, sixteen and a half million dollars came off the budget before even, you know, coming into office, knowing that it was to expire that summer, that first summer of twenty-twenty-two. We stopped collecting additional taxes in every house across the city. That's one. Secondly, in the last ten to twenty years, they short-funded the retiree healthcare system, nearly sixty million dollars into the current system that we have as a city, which short-funded that actual system. And so what was happening, even with the additional taxes, the state has two different requirements, one for pensions and one for retiree healthcare. On pensions, you get a number from the actuary. It says you have to pay ten million every year to make sure people get their pensions. The state obligates you to make that payment in whole, you can never short that payment. From a retiree healthcare standpoint, you get the same number. The actuary will tell you it costs fifteen million a year to make sure this retiree healthcare account stays solvent. However, the difference is, the city is not required to make that payment. And so they did not make that payment in full for over a decade, which is what short-funded it. And so they were shorting that fund between four to seven million dollars on an annual basis. And so it's four to seven million dollar deficit on just retiree healthcare. And then I came in, and I came in with seventeen million dollars less. And so when we restructured retiree healthcare, you know, the deductible for those post-Medicare is two-hundred-and-fifty, the deductible for those pre-Medicare is five-hundred. We covered the first two years of the deductibles. And in addition to that, we created a retiree subcommittee of active retiree, active employees who currently have retiree healthcare, and then those who have retired across the various sectors, police, fire, and general employees. Original idea from the administration was to create a hardship exemption, that if you don't qualify, you know, if you don't have financial means, you're kind of exempt from the out-of-pocket costs. The retiree committee came back and said, we don't want that benefit. What we would prefer is a fifty percent cover of deductible for everybody, every single year in perpetuity, which we agreed to. And so that's why, although you have a two-fifty deductible on Medicare and five-hundred on pre-Medicare, the net deductible is actually one-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars for Medicare and two-fifty for pre-Medicare, based on the request from those who had the retiree healthcare benefit at the table. That was the proposal that they offered the administration when we offered a hardship exemption. And so I do want to make that very clear. You know, that was a change of mental retiree healthcare. For general employees, they had deductibles in the hundreds. Now it's two thousand dollars for an individual and four thousand for a family. That's the healthcare plan that I took, that every one of my appointees took, that every general employee took. And so before we even examined retiree healthcare to address our deficit, we looked at our own healthcare and the own benefits that we take. And so the way that one works is it's two thousand for an individual, four thousand for a family. For the first year, it's covered. Every year after that, you only get fifty percent of that covered. And so that means you have a thousand dollar, you know, to reach your deductible as a single, or two thousand to reach it as a family. But we did this because the third option was layoffs. And we don't want to lay off, and we don't want to cut services because residents still expect you to deliver public services that they pay for in city government. And so we were able to preserve the services that we're offering. We were able to not lay off a single individual, which I'm proud, which I'm proud of. It's very difficult when you come into administration. In collective, the deficit was nearly thirty million dollars, with things that have been deferred over the years. It's not, it's not something I enjoy speaking to, but I'm just trying to lay out the facts, at least provide you our thought process for why decisions were made in the manner in which they're made. As an administration, we're not seeking to go back to the taxpayers to ask for that three-point-five millage. Inflation's at an all-time high. We saw that the schools came up for a millage. That was also voted down. And in twenty twenty-four, we expect Henry Ford College and Dearborn Public Schools to put up three millages. And I'm not sure what's going to happen at that point in time. I think we're hearing how costs have impacted people on a daily basis. You have my commitment to continue to look into your mother's particular case, but I also want to be very clear. As a city, we did not change the pharmaceutical formulary. And so that is provided through Humana as a coverage. But as a city, we don't determine what drug is covered or what drug isn't covered. We haven't touched any of that. And so sometimes what happens from the pharmaceutical benefit manager, a PBM is what it's known as, they change the formulary to try to decrease their own costs. And so a drug that used to be covered, that was brand, if a generic is now online or something they call biosimilar, they rather you go to that line because it's far, it's significantly cheaper to offer than a brand. And it's the same, it's the same formula. So, you know, that typically what you find is the brand company actually owns the generic. And they actually put it out before the patent expires so they can dominate the generic market as well. And so we're always committed. We'll continue to look, and I still owe your mother another follow-up. And so you have my word that that follow-up will happen as well.
Thank you, Mayor. If you'd like to speak, man, just come up and step. Yeah, absolutely.
The Humana told me that there was a choice of what could be changed or not changed. And the prices, the way they are the way they are, Mayor, are because the city changed Humana's drug cost. And they're outrageous. And anybody I talk to and tell them what I'm paying, now my doctor said to come to the office, and whatever pills they have, they will give me. They want me to take my medication. I said, I can't afford it. My husband has already stopped taking two medications because he can't afford it. We can't afford it. And he got a letter today, and Humana is offered to do a mail-order thing. They will give us two hundred dollars to change to the mail order, but we have to get brand-new prescriptions from our doctor faxed over to them. And after that two hundred dollars is spent, it's, that's how they get us into the mail order. We could go back to our pharmacy, but who wants to do this? I have nine pills I take. I got all kinds of doctors. So I don't want to keep, I don't want to change it. And one of my pills is a hundred and twenty dollars. I'll hit two hundred real fast. They said you can pay, if it's two thirty, all you have to do is pay thirty dollars. Well, we talked about it, and we said it would not make sense in our family to make that change. And so we, we're not going to do that. I mean, like I said, now it's going to the doctor's office, and I've asked every doctor, could I do that? And I've got one coming back to me yet. One doesn't do it, but another one said yes. If we have samples, we'll give them to you. I mean, I've never begged like this in my life to keep going. And yeah, my kids hear this all the time, and they feel, you know, for me because they don't want anything to happen to me. And some of the conditions I have, something could happen. That's what worries me. When I retired, we retired with a package. We should have been able to keep that package as seniors. I've had that package since two hundred and three. And all of a sudden, it's, you know, swept from under my feet. That's not right. Whether there's a money problem, you're getting, the city's not poor. There is money, Mayor, and I've heard there's money. And there's other things being done in the city. I'm sorry, but I do not agree. The city, the retirees should have kept the insurance they had the way it was. And it was not Humana that changed it. It was the city that changed it, and they came up with a hundred and twenty dollars for ninety days of pills that I paid five dollars for?
I'm sorry, your time has expired.
Okay, like I told you, six hundred and thirty dollars is what I paid for nine pills for ninety days, as opposed to forty-five dollars. What is that all about? So I just wanted to talk to everybody again. And, you know, the mayor did call me. He's trying to help, I'm sure. But I am not the only retiree. There are plenty of them.
Thank you very much for your time. Thank you. Okay, Mayor.
I'm Dawn.
Dawn, okay, go ahead.
I'm just going to say, my sister said it all when she said all of that, so I'm not going to go back. My mom also said, so I'm not going to go back all through that. But I'm going to take and say something about the shelters and the storms. I think that the older people that were in less than forty-degree weather in their, in their homes, and they had nothing but blankets to hold themselves together, they, and I, my parents were one of them, this is another thing. So what are we going to do when we have the next storm, the next ice storm, the next whatever? And then, and they're freezing, and possibly the next would be death. I mean, ridiculous. I, I, you know, I mean, we're all talking about keeping Camp Dearborn open, woo, woo, woo. And I agree with that. I've got a ton of friends that go there yearly, get the same tents, get the same luck. But what about their, what about their lives? I mean, come on now. Get rid of the, you know, if they, if you've got to put something off to get something else. I lived in Louisiana when they went, when they had the hurricane. I lived in there. And then moved back over here because of water. And they opened the Superdome for everybody, if they did, if they needed it. Come on, Dearborn. Let's go. Camp Dearborn, let's go. Dunlap, let's go. All this other fun stuff. I agree with you. But I also agree, like, let's keep our city going because some of us don't, don't have the necessity to go to other people's homes or to get, or to get a, you know, generator. I've been thinking about a generator, but then again, you have gasoline you got to worry about. You got to worry about your house exploding because you don't know what the hell you're doing? Come on, let's go. Let's wake up. Come on. I know you guys are very intelligent to do other things. Wake up. That's all I can say. And another thing I'm going to say, I go, I go four times a week to exercise. It's expensive. That, too. I make a very low amount of money because I'm part-time, very little. But I put in because I want to be healthy, too. I, you know, I go to the doctors and all that kind of stuff. I take medication, too. Four things in the city, and because I'm, I'm an employee of the city, I, you know, I, I do things for the city and things. And then there's no, there's no discount there. I mean, don't you think that any of the employees, city, schools, library, should get some kind of a discount for, like, working out and stuff like that? Has that ever been thought about? I'm going to tell you.
Sorry, your time has expired.
So basically, I'm thinking we need to talk about healthcare. We're talking about a lot of other things, but healthcare needs to be another, another number-one factor.
Thank you, Dawn. Appreciate it. Any other person here to speak regarding city business? Please step forward.
Councilman, get high. Eric Cullen.
Mr. Cullen?
I was on the healthcare committee. It was no surprise when we started that committee that we were hamstrung from the beginning. We were told to come up with six-point-five million dollars from OPEB funds to replace the six-point-five million dollars that was being withdrawn. That was impossible. We weren't allowed to use COVID money. We weren't allowed to even consider maybe having funds transferred or taken from one account and put to another account. We talked about means testing because we've had, we have retirees that maybe make thirty-five thousand dollars a year. We asked if we could do something with that. We were told no. We asked if we could.
That's actually false.
Mr. Mayor, I know.
I just want to be very clear about it. It's not, it's not, it's not right to come forward and not speak accurate information.
Mayor, I'm, I'm going to address it. I will let you address it, but this is, I know, Mr. Cullen, I mean, I was going to let you finish because the committee was created by this body.
Yes.
Okay, we didn't give you, this body did not ask you to take money. We could take money from somewhere else. Okay, I, I think you don't understand that. You were given a specific task. We didn't say, you're saying you couldn't use COVID money and transfer money? Absolutely not. That's not what we were tasked to do. The voters voted down a millage of sixteen and a half million dollars. You understand that?
Yes.
Okay, that's what we were faced with. We are not allowed to budget for more than what we have. We can't print money like the federal government. We have to spend with what we have. So we created this committee and tasked you with a specific task. For you to come back and say you were hamstrung, you were given an opportunity to find a way to save funds. That's what you were tasked to do. Saving funds doesn't mean use other funds. That's not savings. So I, you know, I resent that comment, and, you know, I'll be honest with you. I'm sure you, I know we had a longstanding relationship. I came to your committee and spoke, okay? I am in full support of retirees, and I really think they should look and see on what city they retired from. Do you live in our city, Mr. Cullen?
No.
No, you don't. So you don't pay our taxes, right?
No.
Okay, so I'm going to tell you like most others that stay in the city, retire from the city, and then leave elsewhere, okay? The citizens that voted told this body, I am not paying any more taxes. I don't believe that I'm going to take a temporary millage and let it go for over ten years. I was the only council member that voted against it because I knew it was going to fail. Why? Because I know that we're paying too much taxes. So I continuously hear you come up and complain all the time about what you couldn't do. You were placed there to find something that you could do, and you failed at it. You came back and said, this is the best we can do, right? And I know that our retirees are sitting out there and saying, it's all the mayor's fault. This body voted for it. These seven people voted for it and said, this was our best option. Some voted against it, some voted for it. We have to do with what we have. But to say that you were hamstrung and you were, you couldn't use money, if you want to be a legislator, put your name on a ballot, move to the city of Dearborn and run for office. If not, then I don't want to keep having you coming up here and keep making these false accusations. It's really upsetting, especially what you did earlier regarding the, regarding the FOIA. I had a tremendous relationship with you when you sent out a false email that you sent about me, and I called you, and you had me come to your place and retracted it because it was inaccurate. So I'm not going to allow you stand up here and tell our residents inaccurate information, okay?
The statement I made about you was not inaccurate. It upset you. I won't say that was inaccurate.
You're saying it wasn't inaccurate? Because remember, I just want to remind you. I have sued people, hold on. I have sued people that, that made these lies before. So be very careful what you say, sir. Just be very careful. You can ask people, I have sued for people who have made those false accusations. I am sick of people making lies and hide behind this stuff. It's over. So be very, I'm just warning you. Be very careful because you retracted it, because you did not state an accurate statement. But right now, what you're saying, you, this issue, you are not allowed to use saved money. We don't believe as a council that we can tell you, your job is to find money that we have saved. COVID money and ARPA money, this body decided to use it for other aspects. So you were never given that option. So that's not hamstrung. So I want to stay on this subject right here. So on this subject right here, okay, if you have anything else to say, I'm going to let the mayor respond after you finish. But please finish what you have to say regarding the healthcare committee aspect.
What I was going to say was also, we attempted to say for people with duty disabilities that they not have to go through this process, and we were told no. Mayor, if you're saying I don't, wait, I'm supposed to address it to council. The means testing was something we brought up. I recall it as being a no. I could go back through and look at the notes I have just to make sure. But that's my understanding, and I stand by that today.
Mr. Cullen, your understanding, yeah, I'm sorry, your understanding, just to clarify that point. Your understanding, I will take it as a fact. But I think, again, this council did not charge you with the authority to determine and make a recommendation that had to be adopted. Are you clearly understanding of that?
You ask us, I would have to bring up exactly what was asked of us.
So you don't know what was asked of you? Well, let me tell you.
I don't recall exactly.
Let me tell you. I, for one, do not delegate my authority. I was elected by the people to make decisions. Some people like them, some people don't. We asked for your opinion of a ways to find a better methodology. That does not mean that what you said will be adopted. In fact, your board specifically had a specific purpose and then eliminated at a certain timeframe. So I wanted to remind you so that the residents understand. We asked for suggestions. It doesn't mean that we have to take your suggestion if we don't like it or it doesn't agree with it. I want to make sure we understand that because we've had you here several times. And people are asking about the healthcare, what we've done. And I think we have been over and over against the healthcare. There is no more zero deductible, there is no more zero deductible healthcare in the city of Dearborn anymore. They can't, we can't afford it. So I, I want to make sure that's abundantly clear, and this body voted for it, okay? So I want to make sure that's clear. Mayor, would you like to respond to anything else on that?
The six-person committee that was established was established with trying to accomplish of achieving the savings without amending the healthcare plan as the, as was recommended by the administration. And the six-person healthcare committee asked us, can you go back and see, can you amend the out-of-pocket costs for a PCP visit and see what that does to the deductible? We provided that information, and the committee said, nope, we don't want to raise the deductible further. We'd rather keep the copays as they are. The administration said we can do a hardship exemption, which would take all the financial streams that a retiree has, and if they qualified based on a federal poverty level, they would be exempt. And the retiree committee came back, according to the meeting notes, and said, nope, we don't want that. We would prefer a fifty percent covering of the deductible for all retirees across the board, rather than having just some benefit through a hardship exemption. That was what was agreed upon. And the six members signed a statement that was delivered to the city council agreeing to all these stipulations. And so that report was actually provided and signed by including, I think you were absent, actually, at that meeting, but you confirmed over the phone because you had, you were, you were, you know, sick at the time. But all six members had agreed, and that signed report was provided to council. As it pertains to duty disability, we said as an administration, anybody that has a duty disability that finds themselves in a difficult situation with a current benefit plan, please provide us their information. Nobody has provided us an information for anybody with duty disability that said they are not, they are currently struggling in any capacity. I still await for anybody to bring a person, and we stand ready to assist them in any capacity that we can, given the extenuating circumstances for those individuals. But that was what the retiree committee was tasked with. It was finding six-point-five million to help us further cut the deficit. It's an annual deficit. It wasn't one time. That is why the exploration of using one-time dollars that you have to pay for one, for one year doesn't resolve anything for the next fiscal year. That's why there was not an agreement to using one-time dollars for an ongoing annual problem. That was what the conversation was.
And then, Mayor, just for the record, too, regarding the deductibles, because we have funded that now as the council, can you just say so that our residents can hear, how much are the deductibles and what we're paying of, and how much that dollar amount is, if, or close to it, if Mr. Kennedy would like to speak to it?
For post-Medicare, it's a two fifty deductible. So the net deductible would actually be one twenty-five because the city will cover fifty percent.
For how long will we cover fifty percent?
In perpetuity.
So what does that mean in plain language? Forever.
And for all retirees that had the previous plan, we also pre-put dollars on an HRA, and recovered the full deductible for the first two years.
And the HRA, Mayor, just for a simple person, the HRA.
It's a debit card preloaded with dollars. So for anybody that has Medicare or post-Medicare, they would have five hundred dollars on the, on the card. For anybody pre-Medicare, they'd have a thousand dollars to cover it for the first two years. And in year three, it had fifty percent covered every year forever.
And then, Mayor, that money, if someone did not use it in year one or year two or year three, does it go back to the city taxpayers?
No, it stays on that card forever.
It stays on that card. So, I mean, like I said.
It's among the richest benefits in the state of Michigan.
Right. I mean, we've had, I don't want to bring my, I don't want to make this into. Right. I mean, we've had, I don't wanna bring my, kinda wanna make this into longer, but if anybody has the right to speak, they do. That's better than engineering people that work at Ford Motor Company's policy right now. So again, Mr. Cullum, the residents of the city of Dearborn voted down a millage that this council, the last council, put on the ballot for a renewal of a temporary millage that had lasted ten years. And the voters said, no. The school board put out a millage and the voters said, no. We are bound by that. So I wanna make that abundantly clear. I have a pocket of money that we have to allocate and that's what we have to use. And the mayor has said his point. The council pretty much analysis, in the analysis, has also indicated that we do not believe in paying our, our bills, which me and you've talked about, because I'm the one that called you and we borrowed money, bonding money. Remember when I called you and I said, they're, they're borrowing money to fund the healthcare and then shorting the payment? I don't know if you recall that, but I'm the one that called you on that. Because that was my concern, that we were borrowing money, which is called bonding, and then putting it in healthcare and then not making the payment fully. So for me, it's very, very clear that we have to make long-term investments so that we're stable. So when we're not here and our children are here and the next generations are here, that we have a stable city that can fu- fund la- for a long time. As the mayor had indicated, it was short-funded many, many years. He found it when he came in. When I was sitting here as a council, I continuously complained and made my voice, uh, heard. It's on my website where I specifically explained it to the residents that bonding was borrowing money to pay off debt. And that it was gonna be a significant gamble for us to do that. So that does, and as you're aware, our healthcare system board, which some people who retired were on, was ninety-ninth in city returns out of one hundred municipalities. And the board came up and said that if we were average in a ten-year period, we would have returned over fifty million more dollars to our pension funds. Which for people to understand is when you do better in your funds, you have less to put in and more to take care of your daily expenses. So there was a lot of things that happened over years. And there's no fingers to be pointed. What we have to deal with is what we're dealing with, with today. And we asked you for your expertise. We didn't think you were hamstrung. But if you were, thought that your expertise were gonna be taken and that you were not, that we were not gonna make the final decision, you were, you were mistaken.
No, I realized when we started this that it was not what we said would be taken.
Okay.
I realized that it was, come up, try to come up with something. And that's what we were trying to do.
Right. Well, we appreciate your efforts, but, uh, the policy has went through the way it has. And there is six hundred retirees. We've had some complaints regarding delays of cards coming in that came through Buffalo, New York when we had a storm in January. That we explained to the, to our retirees that because the card wasn't in your possession yet, you were still covered. And they were coming through that situation. Besides that, we've had a couple incidents that we have looked at and we have asked the mayor to look at. And we will make sure, um, as this lady had indicated, significant changes in healthcare. The mayor is indicating the city has changed no policy in regards to medication. And is that correct, Mayor, is what you said regarding?
Yeah, we don't dictate what goes on to the.
Right. We don't choose what medicine that you can get from your doctor.
I understand that.
So I mean, that, that's the issue there. And unfortunately, that's an issue that's nationally. The President of the United States spoke about it. We pay more for prescription drugs in the United States than any other country in the world. I mean, I, my son is a pharmacist. I know. And it, it's a problem. And, and I, I feel for the people that, uh, my mom is on it. I have a supplement for my mom. She paid her dues. She's a city retiree. She's a business owner. And I pay a supplement on top of every month and I still get bills. I mean, unfortunately, the Medicare system right now is a major issue and it's affecting people. I understand what she's coming through with these, uh, prescription where you have to mail order, you have to change things. Unfortunately, these are things that we need to reach out to our legislators and continue to raise havoc on it because it is a problem. And the President of the United States spoke about it in his State of the Union address. So it's not something that the city of Dearborn is trying to not take, uh, take care of their retirees. Uh, that's not what we're trying to do. And in fact, we've had cities in here that don't have a tenth of what we have saved and put away for our retirees. I think we've done a good job. I think we've done an excellent job and that's why we have a triple A rate by, uh, bond rating. Could we do better? Of course. You know, is there things that we could have done differently in secondhand? Absolutely. Like, we should have had our funds invested differently. And we would have done a lot better, you know? But these are things that we have to learn from and continue to grow. And we have, we have changed. We have changed investment groups and have made tremendous amount of changes uh, regarding them. And it made a hu- huge impact to our retirees. But again, I just wanna make sure our residents understand. Everybody in here understands what they're faced with. And we have a job that we have to do and what's the best interest for our residents totally. So, anyone for my coun- Councilman Paris, then Councilman Hamud.
Thank you, Councilman, uh, Serene. The only comment that I wanted to make is Council President, what you just made mention that just having a few problems or complaints about people that didn't get their cards on time, uh, that just having a few complaints, uh, I will just say that that is not correct. And the reason why I'm saying it is I've talked to a number of persons, uh, or people in person. Uh, I've seen comments from people myself, uh, I've gotten emails, uh, I've talked to a myriad of people that have expressed their concerns and expressed their troubles. Not saying that it's the, directly the result of the city, but it could be from Blue Cross, it could be from the, uh, uh, other healthcare provider. But for whatever reasons, things didn't happen the way they should. And I know it's a change and accidents happen or mistakes are made and we have to get through changes. But the thing is, it's still a problem. And even to this day, and hopefully in the future, we'll be able to iron some things out because it is very frustrating. And I've had the same experiences myself. My wife has had the same experiences, uh, myself. And of course, uh, stating again, you know, I am a city retiree and I do have a, uh, benefit from this. But I do know for a fact, and I'd like to possibly see the numbers sometime. Uh, I would hope that the city is logging complaints and seeing about complaint resolution. How many complaints that we're actually getting and how we're addressing those issues. I know the city has done, uh, a lot to go ahead and try to address some of these issues. And a lot of it is not of their own doing. You know, for a lot of things that are, uh, taking place, it's from the providers or from PNA or from, uh, our healthcare advocate. You know, I myself had problems that went through the city to get a problem resolved. I went through an advocate and the advocate would say they'd come back to me within a couple days. And eight days later, still didn't come back to me. I resolved the problem myself by hours and hours and hours on the phone. Asking even for, uh, Blue Cross cards. And my wife didn't get the cards. And come to find out is the possibility that Blue Cross was not given the address of my wife to send the cards to. How could that be? I'm a retiree. You know, I've been retired from the city for twenty-one years. So wherever that problem came from, personally, I don't care where the problem came from. I don't care if it came from the city, came from Blue Cross, came from HAP, came from the advocate, came from PNA. I don't care. And you know what? Every single retiree, they don't care either. All they want it is to be resolved. The day-to-day problems, get those resolved. And it is more than just a couple other complaints. And I'd like to possibly see sometime in the future how these complaints are being resolved. If we're taking the data, because we're big on data, seeing that the data, uh, will show that in fact there's a problem and what are we doing about it? Did we address some of those issues?
Well, Councilman, thank you. I would recommend that you, in your, uh, capacity, log all your complaints, since you said that mine were inaccurate, you said it's not correct. I disagree with you. My opinion is what I received in email and writing, which was approximately three complaints to the city council regarding the cards. That's what I have so far. And we've had two people attend. And only one who gave us specifics regarding medication was this lady here. So um, if you, as in your office and your capacity, have multiple people complaining, I would suggest you log those and send them through. Copy our exec- council executive so we can find out what is going on. And exactly what you're saying as far as data, we won't know. But that, you can't just say we wanna fix when we gotta know what the problem is. And I'm sure you understand it. So as you're indicating, you didn't get your card, you got your card on time, we heard you got your card now. What I would recommend is everyone, okay, every time you have an issue that comes to you, I would recommend that you ca- you send it through council follow-up and couns- and, uh, and, uh, contact our, uh, executive con- uh, copy here so we can have a record for it and we can see how many complaints we do have. Because it was a major change and from what I see, it, it was not as bad as it's being portrayed as far as the amount of complaints we received. And I've said that before and I base that based on what I've received from people calling me. And sending emails through to our record that we have a change. Councilman Hamud?
Yeah, I guess two items. One, I just kinda wanna loop back. Um, because I understood what was going on in the conversation, but I wanna make it clear for people at home. We discussed earlier means testing for the, uh, retirees in regards to the healthcare benefits. Um, in, in the mayor's answer, you did point to the fact that, um, there was a request on the, there was a proposal on the table from the administration that some of the retirees with, uh, less healthcare receive specific, like we'll call them enhanced, um, benefits. And that was rejected by the committee. That's a form of means testing, correct?
Correct. The means testing would be we take into account all the sources of income for a household.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, based on that, if it qualified, you would have enhanced benefits to your.
Right. So that was rejected by the retiree committee?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, because I remember that we discussed that proposal and then I kinda wondered where it went.
Correct.
So that's the first time I actually heard that it was rejected by the committee. And then we took the committee's recommendation, actually, when we passed the final budget to give a broader benefit to all retirees instead of specifically helping those in need. So um, I mean, that, that's why I think it's, it's inaccurate to have said that statement. I mean, you, you voiced your concern, but I think I just wanted to make it clear that that concept is called means testing, where you help people who have specific financial hardships. So that was one item. Um, the other item that was kind of brought earlier was, um, in regards to all the other investments that we're making in the city. And, um, thi- this is kind of something that I've brought up since my first day in office, which has to do with city facilities assessments. So we have a lot of buildings that have seniors in them and they don't have the best, let's say HVAC, plumbing. Uh, there's, there's all kinds of issues. I mean, and we brought it up in the COW where we have emergency backup generators that may or may not work. We, we, there was a whole discussion on that last week, uh, that the chief presented. So there are, uh, I know it's very unpopular sometimes, but I'm very, very big on planning. So sometimes before we spend money on things that I, that I consider as, uh, enhanced items like new parks and, and things like that, I, I am genuinely very concerned, and I guess I'll use this as my council comment. I'm very concerned about the, the base necessities and the base, uh, requirements that we need to provide our residents. Because as we've seen now, just this year, we've, we've had severe power outages twice in the past couple months already. And I mean, I was out there helping people empty their fridges, uh, provide them power generators. The funniest thing is when people ask, why do you need a freezer? It's the winter. I'm like, well, the food is in their homes. So you have to provide them power so they can use their fridges to keep their current food. So, uh, and even if the house is cold. So, so there's a, and, and never mind the warming centers, you have to make sure common areas are open. Because there's a lot of people who live in senior housing in Dearborn specifically especially. And we have to make sure their facilities are maintained and that we provide budget for that. And I guess I, I have not seen a full-blown facility assessment. Nor have we, you know, been requested to allocate money to one. So that, that's still something that I think is extremely important that we really need to take a look at. Um, as well as a, a general parks plan that I've also been kind of asking for, which is what are, what are the needs across all of our parks as opposed to kinda just piecemealing it and looking where there are complaints? Because as much as it is good for government to be respondent to complaints, the proactive approach is go figure out what our current parks requirements are and figure out what money needs to be spent across all of them. So I know some cities did allocate some of their ARPA dollars and their county dollars to renovating existing parks, not just building new ones. And notably, I'm sure we received extra money because we were building new ones. But it, it would be nice if we also spent some money on, on existing parks, which we are doing here in s- in smaller quantities, like a hundred thousand here, a hundred thousand there. But clearly, there are other necessities that people are very, very clear that they're missing. And, you know, just this last recent power outage was also, you know, power outages and people getting cold and kind of what was being referred to, th- this is, this is something that we need to address before we address, um, other more, uh, we'll call them like luxuries. So, thank you.
Just to clarify, Council President?
Yes, Council, Mayor?
The, the thirty million is not being spent on just three new parks. That also includes remodeling Lapeer, Ford Field, Ford Woods, Hemlock, Crowley, uh, Levegood, um, includes several, uh, of all of our largest parks, including several of our pocket parks. That's why we all launched a survey asking, what additional amenities would you like at some of the, um, the, uh, the existing parks? The City Hall Peace Park is actually an existing park. That's not a new park. The Yaba parcel of land, the boat, what we call the bowtie area, um, that's, that's green space currently that we maintain. So we're just providing some different types of amenities on that parcel. And then really the one between the downtown west Dearborn parking structures would be considered largely that new one. But more than just new parks, which has a small portion of just the thirty million dollars, a large investment is going into also Summer Stevens, Tenneque and Lapeer Park Pool, that's six million dollars right there. We're spending more on those three new pools than we're spending on the three new parks. Um, and so I just wanna be very clear that the parks dollars are meant to try to touch as many parks as we currently have all across the city of Dearborn and not just, um, the three. Facilities assessment is currently being done internally by our DPW staff. So they're going through building by building, coming up with a facilities assessment. As it pertains to generators, the generator purchase or, order, uh, 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 came before council previously, but I know um, the cost kept escalating, so council, um, uh, chose not to take it up. I'll be very clear about that for the Hubbard's. The generators did come up before council before, but at the time, costs were escalating, so they did not take it up. Um, so what we're actually doing right now is trying to use economies of scale. We're trying to go back out for an RFP for not just our senior buildings, but also our fire stations. Because the generators we have at our fire stations are, are dilapidated. And so we think if we go out for a bid for multiple generators together, hopefully we can use economies of scale to bring that price down. So that RFP is being drafted to get put out. So we're being very strategic from a facilities perspective with how we go back out for bid to make sure we're getting the best possible prices. Um, but the facilities plan is being done internally and when it concludes, we'll bring it forward. There's just dozens of buildings. Um, and then lastly, I did wanna note, um, for all city employees, there's a fifty percent discount at the Ford Performing Arts Center. So all city employees do get a fifty percent discount if you do go to our, uh, the Ford Community Performing Arts Center.
Does that include the schools and all that too, or is it just?
Man. City employees. The schools are not considered city employees.
School employees are state of Michigan employees. Yeah, thank you, Mayor.
I was including.
I know. I just don't want you yelling from the audience. So I wanna, if you would like to come forward, yeah.
So how do we include the schools too with this?
So from my perspective, what I would tell you is, um, most of our facilities run in the red. That means they're not operating, they, they lose money. And so at this point in time, I wanna take care of city employees first and our city residents. We're going through, uh, 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 how much money each building is making or losing and trying to bring it up to speed. Because we don't have the ability to just keep losing money. If the city would like to subsidize a portion of the, of the membership on behalf of its employees, we're happy to enter that contract. If Dearborn Public Schools would love to subsidize a portion of a city's employees' membership at our facilities.
So that means, Don, is you can go to the school board meeting and ask them, because they're in charge of their budget, if they'd like to subsidize it, okay?
I'll have to find out when that is, but yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure they have.
This was a beginning.
All right, well, good. Appreciate it. All right, any other comments, Councilman Paris?
I think this might clarify something is very early on, uh, I know I did have some communication asking for some data as far as how many complaints that we've received. And the council did early on receive some complaints, three to five complaints, uh, you know, that were coming forward and so on. But that was in the very beginning. I mean, this was, everything took effect after January first. The only thing that I would suggest now, I'm sure we can do this or we should be aware of it, as far as data. Uh, we have, uh, uh, our benefits administration that is taking, an employee there is taking a lot of phone calls, trying to assist people, answering complaints, whether it's email, whether it's phone calls. PNA group is taking phone calls, is taking emails, which would be also complaints. Uh, Blue Cross Blue Shield is taking our phone calls, looking into things. They are taking complaints. HAP is looking into things and taking our complaints. And we're also having the public healthcare advocate that is listening to us, listening to retirees, listening to the beneficiaries about complaints. So it's not really realistic to think that we have three to five complaints when we had that early on. This has exacerbated over a period of time. We are getting complaints. We know that there's gonna be problems. Totally understand that. But there are enough complaints that I think it would behoove us as a city possibly to look at that data, gather that data. We should have been doing this right from the very beginning, looking at the data, where can we improve? Because you know what? We gotta hold those people accountable. The Blue Cross, HAP, the advocate and PNA, they're providing us a service, our employees a service. And at the expense of the city, we should be getting the bang for the buck and making sure that we are. One way of doing that is looking at data, does it sustain the service that we're expecting, both as a city and both as retirees? So that's the only comment I've made and I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilman Paris. Councilman Hamud?
Yeah, I just learned.
Okay. Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, I just.
Councilman Pa- Councilman Hamud?
Yeah, I just learned a few new things from the mayor, so. Yeah, I just learned a few new things from the mayor, so, um, just a couple of questions. One, is there going to be any documentation in regards to this parks plan? And two would be, uh, when will the faci- internal facilities assessment be completed?
Uh, I'll get back to you on those items.
All right. Yeah, Council, just to remind, everything has to come to the council for an approval. So, uh, the allocation of budgets and buckets that we talked about.
Which is why having the documentation of the plan before it gets to that point would be helpful, and then two is.
It hasn't got to that point.
It hasn't gotten there yet, I mean, that's what I don't understand.
No, that.
Once, you don't get an allocation request until there's a request.
Yes, however, he listed up several parks and said, "We're going to do this improvement, this improvement, this improvement."
I understand that.
Is if that's enumerated in a document somewhere, I'd like to see it. And then I'd like to see the general plan of all the improvements we're going to be making.
Yeah, Councilman, again.
I think it's a very reasonable request.
Once it's finalized, we'll be bringing it forward. As it pertains to the pools.
It's not a reasonable request. It's not an allocation. Your job, again, your job is to allocate a specific item. We agreed as a council to put a bucket. Did you, you were there when I made my speech about, we did a bucket, allowed him to take, hold on, to allow him to take ten million dollars of our taxpayer money and convert it to thirty million, right? And now he's going back, when he brings up the plan, he's going to bring it. You cannot allocate any money without coming through the council, is that correct, Mayor?
Correct.
I just want to make sure, I mean, you're asking for what is his paper and notes idea, it's not done yet.
Okay, so.
You're not entitled to that, if you want my opinion, you're not entitled.
Which is great, however, all right, if you want to bring up the analogy, I have a bucket, I have a bucket that has water in it, right? And I have to use it to put out fires. Now, if, if he comes and says, "I have a small fire over here," I say, "Okay, good, take from the bucket." And he says, "I have a small fire over here," "Okay, good, take from the bucket." I need to know how many total fires there are in order to understand where to pour the water when I'm doing it because us as council also decide which fires are the most important to put out, do we not? We allocate the budget, that's the whole point, is allocation. So my point is, I'd like a full picture of all of the fires that we have in order to understand where I need to put the, the funding or the water in order to address them. So I think it's reasonable to ask what all of the different items I'm going to be asked to vote on instead of looking at them piecemeal and just seeing, you know, the small item.
They're not, they're not piecemeal because they haven't been brought forward.
If I may, council president?
Yeah, Mayor, go ahead.
I was going to say, if the council president, um, there's one, that's one of the reasons we have a survey, right? It's also sometimes our parks and rec staff may see something, but residents may see something else. And so, God willing, once the survey is complete, once we compile the full list of how we determine to best spend the total grant, you'll see that full list before council, so you can go through and see areas how much is being spent across the board.
Right, and just to make it clear too.
And some dollars are free earmarked.
It's up to the council then at that point. If we don't want to allocate it for that area, we don't have to.
Yeah.
I mean, I wanted to make sure it's clear because people get money, what our responsibility is. We allocated a bucket to allow that bucket to turn into three times the money, which I thought was a great, uh, support by the entire council. And I think it, it did work because we took ten million and got thirty million dollars. So everybody knows that thirty million dollars that came in the press conference, only ten million of it was taxpayer dollars for the city of Dearborn ARPA funds. The other money came from the state and county partners. So, once it comes through, that's why I, I think it's premature when you're asking, using analogy of the fire, is because you, you only have the thirty million. If we want to put more, we can, we want to put less, we can. We gave thirty million for a bucket. If the project comes through and we don't agree with it, it goes nowhere. I just want to make sure it's, it's clear. I mean, this council did not relinquish that power by allocating the ten million. It gave the ability to re- get more resources, but it didn't take the ability to allocate away from us. So when the projects come through, if you want to see it in a holistic aspect, and you don't want to see it each one, we have to wait for them to come through. As of right now, uh, as the mayor indicated, it's not done yet. We, we're just in the be- he's just in the beginning stages. And remember, when we say he, it's this body that determines it. If we don't want that money to go to this, for these aspects, we don't have to give it to them. I just want to make sure it's clear.
And, and I'll have to respond to that just very quickly?
Of course.
The, I asked for the documentation once existed, so once he's, when he said, "We'll understand when the building assessment," did I say anything?
No, no, no.
Okay, so my point is, once that document exists, I'd like to see it. That, that was my request.
Right, I understand.
And if we can get a, a general timeline on either of those documents as to when they'll get complete, I would appreciate that, thank you.
Absolutely, no problem. Any other questions or comments?
I just have a.
Councilman Abraham?
So I've been sitting here quietly listening to democracy being hashed out tonight, and it is very ugly at times, um, but it's effective. And I can say this, after twenty-one years of sitting here, that this role as an elected official is probably the only one in government where it gets really personal. And I don't mean between us, I mean between us and our constituents. Elected officials in Washington and Lansing, God bless them all, I know they are supportive of their constituents, but I don't think there's too many residents of Dearborn that drive to Lansing to see what's happening at the state Capitol very often. And we get it in our face here twice a month, non-stop, not to mention the emails, the texts, and the telephone calls. And we embrace it, all of us. I don't like to speak for my colleagues all the time, but we're all here because we embrace it and we care. I've been here the longest out of all my colleagues, and so some of the comments that were made earlier about deficiencies in healthcare funds and pension, uh, returns, I was here for those. That's part of the process. Uh, the city of Dearborn government is not immune from challenges and mistakes. We're humans, um, and it's really tough up here to, as, as the councilman Hamud said, our number one goal is to pri- prioritize what our residents want and need. And we do that every day with every item, and it's not pretty. We're challenged collectively, this body, to pick the winners and the losers on a lot of debates and a lot of issues. Um, but I could tell you that we all take it very seriously. We hear you, I know there's people sitting in the audience still regarding healthcare. I've been here for the pools, we've been here during the recession with property values and taxes and pensions. Um, we hear you, we're listening, and I could just tell you that our plan is not always to just make a change and be done with it. It's to make a change, hopefully it's for the better, and that we continuously evaluate and improve a lot of those processes, whether it's parks, pools, Camp Dearborn, healthcare, all of them, we're not done. I will tell you that I'm not done with healthcare. We're going to have another budget session, uh, another budget season coming up in the next few months, and we're going to revisit a lot of these things. They may change, they may not. But I promise you, we'll look deep and we'll take all of your concerns very seriously. Not to say that we didn't a year ago, we did, but sometimes different things happen. This situation changes, and we have to pivot, and we have to learn, and we have to address the challenges that face not only the city as a government, but the people that we represent. And I just want everybody to understand that when things are said, not all the council people respond to everything that's being said. And I don't want that silence to be misunderstood as people that aren't necessarily following the issue or taking it seriously. I, I could tell you that everyone here takes this role very, very seriously every day. And for most of us, it keeps us up at night thinking how we could have done a better job, how to learn from it, and how to do a better job for our community tomorrow. None of us intend on doing a bad job, trust me. Not from the mayor or his team down to anyone on the council or any city employee for that matter. They come to work every day to do the very best they can for our residents. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilman Abraham, appreciate your comments. Councilwoman Harris, do you have something else to add?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harris?
Uh, thank you, I appreciate the comments of my colleagues, but in particular, um, what Councilwoman Abraham just stated. Um, I've been trying to think how to articulate and, and rather than say it, um, right now on television, how I could make a request, but I'm going to, I'm going to just say what I've been trying to think. Um, I appreciate, uh, Eric Cullum and the service that he and the other members of the healthcare task force. Um, they, they worked really hard to try and come up with ways to reduce the impact of the financial challenges the city is facing, to reduce the impact on our retirees. And they, they tried to be very creative, and they had to make some tough decisions when it came to what they recommended back to the mayor as well. Um, and, you know, um, what, uh, they would sacrifice for one group in order to benefit the group as a whole. And, um, one of the things that we discussed last year during the budget process and when we were talking about the impact of what the changes were, might be, because it, it was all, um, there were, were numbers to support what the mayor and the administration were proposing, but there also was some, um, strategy involved in trying to figure out how it would, um, impact individual employees and their situations because, oh, or retirees, because there's always, you know, some retirees have much higher healthcare expenses than others. And so we tried to, um, develop a picture of, you know, how would it impact this group or that group depending on what their healthcare needs were. And, um, Councilwoman Abraham spent some time working on tho- those numbers to try and figure out what will be the real dollar impact to a retiree who, um, is at whatever point in their retirement. And what I'd like to do is, um, look at those numbers in, in the way that we are trying to make those decisions to figure out, was that accurate? You know, how has it impacted, um, the majority of, of the retirees? It's impacted some much more than others, um, but, you know, how can we take the data that Mr. Cullum was trying to ask for? I think he's trying to get some numbers as to, you know, how have, um, the retirees been impacted with, with the, with the FOIA request that he was making. Um, and sometimes we don't even know what to ask for to try and get the answers that we're seeking. And as Councilwoman Abraham pointed out earlier, it's, with a FOIA request, it can be just the words of how you ask for something, that you might end up with getting nothing back because we don't have something that exists in documentation that looks like exactly what you're asking for. But, um, as we enter the budget process for this coming year, I think that we'll all be looking for, you know, how has what we decided last year or what we went along with last year, um, or what we chose to say no to last year? Um, how, how were those decisions from last year? How has it played out in real life? How has it impacted the employ- the retirees in real life now that we're at this point? Because it, because things are always evolving, you know, the, and, and, um, it is a very difficult decision for us to, to weigh out, um, what it, how do our decisions impact, um, all of the people in the city who are paying taxes and living day-to-day? You know, for quality of life, how does it impact the current employees? How does it im- impact the retirees? Um, and there's only so much in, again, uh, Councilman Hamud's analogy, the bucket, to draw from. And, um, how are we going to allocate those dollars? So going forward in the, in the budget, in the coming year, I am hoping that the administration, um, has data that they can look at and, and maybe make some changes to, to, um, the healthcare plan options for the retiree, retirees going forward. And those are the questions we're going to be asking, or that I'll be asking.
All right. And then, and again, just for the residents, that's our decision as well. So if you have recommendations, as we asked in the past, bring the recommendations forward because it's this council's job to make those changes if we'd like to. I just want to make that abundantly clear. All right, we have somebody from the audience, I think. Okay, anybody else from the audience would like to speak to the council regarding city business? Okay, hearing is seen on, I take an offer to adjourn. Motion adjourned by Councilman Hamud, we are adjourned.